For occupants at the VIP Gallery, the main entrance and north and south VIP exits are available. For occupants at the second-floor gallery, there are exits available at both sides. For occupants at the third-floor gallery, there are available exits at the east and west sides. In case of emergency, this is the plenary hall exit plan. For guests situated at the rostrum, the nearest exits are at the north and south rostrum. For occupants at the first floor and front rows of the VIP Gallery, the north, south, and main entrance exits are available. For occupants at the VIP Gallery, the main entrance and north and south VIP exits are available. For occupants at the second-floor gallery, there are exits available at both sides. For occupants at the third-floor gallery, there are available exits at the east and west sides.
Session resumed. Majority Leader, please. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, considering that the copies of Journal Number 3 dated August 4, 2025 and Journal Number 4 dated August 5, 2025 were already distributed to the members, I move to dispense with the reading thereof and subsequently to approve the said journals. So I move, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Is there no objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. The reading of the said journals is dispensed with. And journals Number 3 dated August 4, 2025 and Journal Number 4 dated August 5, 2025 are hereby approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to take up additional reference of business and request that the Secretary-General be directed to read the titles and bills and resolutions on first reading as well as communications and committee reports. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
Secretary-General, please proceed.
Additional reference of business: Bills on first reading: House Bill 3162, to reduce the premium contribution rate to the Philhealth from 5% to 3%, by Representative Loyola.
Thank you. To the Committee on Health. Please continue.
House Bill 3163, instituting a Magna Carta for local planners, by Representative Loyola.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 3164, establishing Cebu Normal University Regular Campus in Allegria, Cebu, by Representative Calderon.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 3165, establishing a multi-species marine hatchery in Walwal, Cebu, by Representative Calderon.
To the Committee on Aquaculture and Fisheries Resources.
House Bill 3166, naming the entire stretch of the Santander-Barili Toledo National Ord traversing certain barangays in San Juan and certain barangays in Barili, Cebu as a Pablo P. Garcia Highway, by Representative Calderon.
To the Committee on Public Works and Highways.
House Bill 3167 and 3168, converting extension campuses of the Cebu Technological University in certain municipalities in Cebu into regular campuses of the CTU, by Representative Calderon.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 3169, banning all forms of online gambling in the Philippines, by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Games and Amusements.
House Bill 3170, mandating the National Food Authority to establish rice drying facilities, by Representative Po.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 3171, promoting integrated urban farming in the metropolitan areas to address food security concerns, by Representative Po.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food and the Special Committee on Food Security.
House Bill 3172, promoting the use of aeroponics, hydroponics, and aquaponics for the production of high-value fish crops and vegetables, by Representative Po.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 3173, providing a framework to protect and promote the right to adequate food, by Representative Po.
To the Committee on Human Rights.
House Bill 3174, providing for a comprehensive consolidation of agricultural lands, titling of untitled agricultural lands, by Representative Po.
To the Committee on Agrarian Before.
House Bill 3175, strengthening agricultural and fisheries mechanization by integrating the DOST in the implementation of RA Number 10601, by Representative Po.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food and the Committee on Aquaculture and Fisheries Resources.
House Bill 3176, to enhance food security and ultimately achieve food sovereignty, by Representative Po.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 3177, declaring the Hundred Islands National Park in Alaminos City Pangasinan a tourism zone, by Representative Celeste.
To the Committee on Tourism.
House Bill 3178, establishing a testa training and assessment center in Binalbagan Negroes Occidental, by Representative Yulo.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 3179, providing for an annual soil survey and conservation program, by Representative Yulo.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 3180, establishing a soil testing laboratory facility in each agricultural district, by Representative Yulo.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 3181, creating a new RTC branch in the sixth judicial region to be stationed in Isabela Negroes Occidental, by Representative Yulo.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill 3182, creating additional port sala in the RTC of Imayland City Negroes Occidental, by Representative Yulo.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill 3183, extending the validity period of the PRC-issued professional identification cards in accordance with laws governing the practice of professionals in the Philippines, by Representative Yulo.
To the Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation.
House Bill 3184, strengthening the utilization of information and communication technology in all public elementary schools and high schools, by Representative Yulo.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 3185, providing for free Epi-Tin injection for the allergies treatment of indigent patients, by Representative Yulo.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 3186, providing free dormitories for students in SUCs, by Representative Yulo.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 3187, empowering the barangay chairperson in the local government units in the regulation of cockfighting during barangay fiestas, by Representative Yulo.
To the Committee on Games and Amusements.
House Bill 3188, declaring the Minadland Falls in Biaw-Pang Binalbagan Negroes Occidental a ecotourism site, by Representative Yulo.
To the Committee on Tourism.
House Bill 3189, converting the provincial road situated in Crossing Magalyon in certain municipalities in Negroes Occidental into a secondary national road, by Representative Yulo.
To the Committee on Public Works and Highways.
House Bill 3190, establishing an audivicial center in each public elementary and high schools, by Representative Yulo.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 3191, establishing an anti-rebcenter in each congressional district nationwide, by Representative Yulo.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 3209, strengthening the field offices of the comlec by upgrading and creating certain positions, by Representatives Garcia Dante and Tereng.
To the Committee on Housing and Urban Development.
House Bill 3221.
Suspended.
Page 9.
House Bill Number 3209, strengthening the field offices of the comlec by upgrading and creating certain positions, by Representatives Garcia Dante and Tereng.
To the Committee on Suffrage and Electoral Reforms.
House Bill 3210, institutionalizing the national wetlands conservation policy, by Representatives Garcia Dante and Tereng.
To the Committee on Natural Resources.
House Bill 3211, converting the Concho Provincial Road in Tres Martirats City and Amadeo Cavito International Road, by Representative Remulia.
To the Committee on Public Works and Highways.
House Bill 3212, declaring June 26 of every year as a special non-working holiday in the province of Batanes, by Representative Gato.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 3213, creating the Philippine Centers for Disease Prevention and Control, by Representative Gato.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 3214, establishing protection against deep fakes, recognizing the right to one's face, body, and voice, by Representative Yom Suwan.
To the Committee on Information and Communications Technology.
House Bill 3215, establishing a Magna Carta for barangay health workers, by Representative Yom Suwan.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 3216, providing protection and incentives to freelance workers, by Representative Yom Suwan.
To the Committee on Labor and Employment.
House Bill 3217, providing livelihood assistance for disadvantaged workers and institutionalizing the DOL's Integrated Livelihood Program, by Representative Yom Suwan. To the Committee on Labor and Employment.
House Bill 3218, providing for financial literacy and fraud prevention programs for Filipino workers, by Representative Yom Suwan.
To the Committee on Labor and Employment.
House Bill 3219, penalizing foreign interference in the Philippines and creating the Counter-Foreign Interference Task Force, by Representative Topaz.
To the Committee on National Defense and Security.
House Bill 3220, rationalizing the Philippine basic education system by removing the senior high school education, by Representative Yulo.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 3221, providing for automatic moratorium on the payment of basic utility bills during disasters in areas declared to be in state of calamity, by Representative Yulo.
To the Committee on Disaster Resilience.
House Bill 3222, providing for free health and medical benefits for all uniformed personnel of the PNP, AFP, BFP, BJMP, PCG, NBI, BuCor, and PIDEA in all government health facilities, by Representative Yulo.
To the Committee on National Defense and Security and Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill 3223, providing protection incentives to freelance workers, by Representative Yulo.
To the Committee on Labor and Employment.
House Bill 3224, enhancing the discount on the purchase of goods and services.
Sixty-two.
Yeah.
House Bill 3224, enhancing the discount on the purchase of goods and services of senior citizens and PWDs, by Representative Yulo.
To the Committee on Ways and Means and Committee on Senior Citizens and Special Committee on Persons with Disabilities.
House Bill 3225, creating the Health Emergency Auxiliary Reinforcement Team under the DOH, by Representative Yulo.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 3226, to develop a national quality policy, by Representative Yulo.
To the Committee on Trade and Industry.
House Bill 3227, instituting a national land use policy, by Representative Yulo.
To the Special Committee on Land Use.
House Bill 3228, establishing public basic education schools in geographically isolated and disadvantaged and conflict-affected areas, by Representative Yulo.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 3229, modernizing the Bureau of Immigration, by Representative Yulo.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill 3230, strengthening the regulatory powers of the National Food Authority, by Representative Yulo.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 3231, establishing the private basic education voucher program, by Representative Yulo.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 3232, terminating the visa upon arrival scheme in the Philippines, by Representative Gomez.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill 3233, increasing the service incentive leave of employees, by Representatives Villa Ferte Miguel Luiz, Villa Ferte Vincensor, Renato Luigi, Horibata, and Ridon.
To the Committee on Labor and Employment.
House Bill 3234, providing for the revised warehouse receipts law, by Representatives Villa Ferte Miguel Luiz, Villa Ferte Vincensor, Renato Luigi, Horibata, and Ridon.
To the Committee on Trade and Industry.
House Bill 3235, proclaiming the first Monday of August of every year as line workers appreciation day, by Representatives Villa Ferte Miguel Luiz, Villa Ferte Vincensor, Renato Luigi, Horibata, and Ridon.
To the Committee on Energy.
House Bill 3236, strengthening local sports programs to develop young athletes, by Representatives Villa Ferte Miguel Luiz, Villa Ferte Vincensor, Renato Luigi, Horibata, and Ridon.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Bill 3237, fixing the share of the LGU hosting game operations licensed or operated by the POCOR in the process of the franchise stocks, by Representatives Villa Ferte Miguel Luiz, Villa Ferte Vincensor, Renato Luigi, Horibata, and Ridon.
To the Committee on Games and Amusements.
House Bill 3238, declaring the Halamanan Festival of Giginto Bulakan a major tourist attraction and declaring for that purpose January 22 of every year a special non-working holiday in the municipality of Giginto, by Representative Cruz Agatha Paula.
To the Committee on Tourism.
House Bill 3239, declaring the Ilab Garden City Project and its premises located in Santa Cruz-Giginto-Bulakan an ecotourism site, by Representative Cruz Agatha Paula.
To the Committee on Tourism.
House Bill 3240, declaring Bahay Natisa in Balagtas-Bulakan as a historical and tourism site, by Representative Cruz Agatha Paula.
To the Committee on Tourism.
House Bill 3241, declaring the Hatiran Fiesta as an official festival in Bukawe-Bulakan, by Representative Cruz Agatha Paula.
To the Committee on Tourism.
House Bill 3242, declaring the shrine of the Battle of Kakarong de Sili and its premises located in Real de Kakarong Pandi-Bulakan a historical park and ecotourism site, by Representative Cruz Agatha Paula.
To the Committee on Tourism.
House Bill 3243, mandating all tollway operators to use unified electronic toll collection access pass, by Representative Olivares.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 3244, establishing Palenyake School of Arts, by Representative Olivares.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 3245, creating the Department of Disaster Resilience, by Representative Olivares.
To the Committee on Disaster Resilience and Committee on Government Reorganization.
House Bill 3246, creating three additional branches of the RTC in the national capital judicial region to be stationed in Palenyake City, by Representative Olivares.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill 3247, establishing the national framework for water resource management and creating the Department of Water Resources and the Water Regulatory Commission, by Representative Olivares.
To the Committee on Public Works and Highways and Committee on Government Reorganization.
House Bill 3248, converting the LaA satellite campus of the Davao de Oro State College located in the second district of Davao de Oro into the LaA branch of the Davao de Oro State College, by Representatives Zaniza and Zamora Maria Carmen.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 3249, establishing the Bureau of Agriculture Cooperative Development as an attached agency under the DA, by Representative Po.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 3250, institutionalizing a national seafood traceability system by Representative Po.
To the Committee on Aquaculture and Fisheries Resources.
House Bill 3251, establishing the National Coffee and Cocoa Research Center, by Representative Po.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 3252, establishing a national agro-food facility, by Representative Po.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 3253, granting the Occidental Mindoro Electric Cooperative Inc. a franchise for the convenience of electric power to the end-users in certain municipalities in the province of Occidental Mindoro, by Representatives De Jesus, Da Go'ok, and Targela.
To the Special Committee or to the Committee on Legislative Franchises.
House Bill 3254, establishing a framework for blue economy, by Representative Sing Sonbihan.
To the Committee on Economic Affairs.
House Bill Numbers 3255 and 3256, separating certain cities from barangays Manatong and Suyopropor in Suyopilocosur and constituting them into barangays Butak and Kidapian respectively, by Representatives Sing Sonbihan.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 3257, declaring and designating Northern Luzon Heroes Hill National Park situated within the municipalities of Narvakan and Santa, Ilocosur, as a Northern Luzon Heroes Hill natural monument, by Representatives Sing Sonbihan.
To the Committee on Natural Resources.
House Bill 3258, creating the Pasig River Integrated and Sustainable Development Commission, by Representatives Sing Sonbihan.
To the Committee on Housing and Urban Development.
House Bill 3259, establishing youth development centers in every city and municipality, by Representative Santos Marc Anthony.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Bill 3260, to establish an elderly care and nursing complex in the province of Camarines Norte, by Representative Talia do.
To the Committee on Senior Citizens.
House Bill 3261, declaring the Santa Elena in Camarines Norte as an ecotourism zone, by Representative Talia do.
To the Committee on Tourism.
House Bill 3262, declaring the Kapalonga Camarines Norte as an ecotourism zone, by Representative Talia do.
To the Committee on Tourism.
House Bill 3263, declaring the Parokia de Nuestra Señora de Candelaria in Paracale, Camarines Norte as a pilgrimage site and as a tourism destination, by Representative Talia do.
To the Committee on Tourism.
House Bill 3264, establishing in Santa Elena, Camarines Norte, the Santa Elena Testa Training and Assessment Center, by Representative Talia do.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 3265, creating additional branches of RTC to be stationed in Labo, Camarines Norte, by Representative Talia do.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill 3266, establishing a national minimum wage rate for private sector workers, by Representative Talia do.
To the Committee on Labor and Employment.
House Bill 3267, establishing the national police clearance system, by Representative Talia do.
To the Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill 3268, banning single-use plastics nationwide, by Representative Talia do.
To the Committee on Ecology.
House Bill 3269, creating an agricultural pension fund for enhanced social protection to poor agricultural workers, by Representative Talia do.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bills 3270 and 3271, declaring the municipalities of Paracale and Jose Pangadiban in Camarines Norte as ecotourism zones, by Representative Talia do.
To the Committee on Tourism.
House Bill 3272, establishing the One Tablet, One Student Program for all students enrolled in public schools and SUCs, by Representative Talia do.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture and the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 3273, declaring February 1 of every year a special non-working holiday in the province of Camarines Norte, repealing RA 9090, by Representative Talia do.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 3274, providing for fixed salaries of barangay officials and such other benefits being received by regular government employees, by Representative Talia do.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 3275, providing for the Magna Carta barangay health workers, by Representative Defensor.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 3276, declaring the January the Haniway Public Cemetery and its adjoining structures as a national cultural center, treasure, by Representative Defensor.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 3277, converting the Mina Badjangan Diversion Road in the province of Iloilo to a national road, by Representative Defensor.
To the Committee on Public Works and Highways.
House Bill 3278, converting the circumferential roads of the nine-island barangays of Dapas, Surigao del Norte into national roads, by Representative Matugas.
To the Committee on Public Works and Highway.
House Bill 3279, establishing a regular district office of the LTON Viga Batatanduanes, by Representative Rodriguez Uleohio.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 3280, establishing a multi-species marine hatchery and research center in Batoka, Tanduanes by Representative Rodriguez Yulojo.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Fisheries and Resources.
House Bill 3281, mandating all power telecommunications, cable and internet providers to mend dangling wires and clear non-operational overhead wires and cables. By Representatives Valeriano and Chuang.
To the Committee on Public Works and Highways.
House Bill 3282, providing stronger measures for the conservation and protection of wildlife resources and their habitats by Representative Dalob.
To the Committee on Natural Resources.
House Bill 3283, modifying the grounds for substitution of candidates by Representative Dalob.
To the Committee on Suffrage and Electoral Reforms.
House Bill 3284, providing for the Magna Carta barangay health workers by Representative Dalob.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 3192, enhancing the national shelter program by Representative Yulo.
To the Committee on Housing and Urban Development.
House Bill 3193, institutionalizing and strengthening the national cybersecurity framework by Representative Yulo.
To the Committee on Information and Communications Technology.
House Bill 3194, to reform the budget process instituting an integrated PFM system and increasing budget transparency and participation by Representative Yulo.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
House Bill 3195, establishing a regulatory framework for a robust, reliable and trustworthy development application and use of artificial intelligence systems by Representative Yulo.
To the Committee on Information, Communications, Technology.
House Bill 3196, promoting transparent governance and instituting anti-corruption mechanisms in the operation of banks and other financial institutions by Representative Yulo.
To the Committee on Banks and Financial Individaries.
House Bill 3197, expanding the services of the Philippine Crop Insurance Corporation and encouraging private sector participation in agricultural insurance by Representative Yulo.
To the Committee on Government Enterprises and Private Decision.
House Bill 3198, instituting a national autism care plan by Representatives Sendanya, Diokno, Ismula and Bagao.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 3199, establishing a welfare and social assistance program to families left behind by overseas Filipino workers by Representative Primicia Sagabas.
To the Committee on Overseas Workers Affairs.
House Bill 3200, establishing information and communications technology hubs nationwide by Representative Primicia Sagabas.
To the Committee on Information and Communications Technology.
House Bill 3201, updating the teaching of tax literacy, consciousness and responsibility in intermediate, secondary, technical vocational and tertiary education by Representative Primicia Sagabas.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture and the Committee on Hire and Technical Education.
House Bill 3202, providing free school meals for kindergarten and elementary students by Representative Primicia Sagabas.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 3203, strengthening the Komelek by increasing the manpower complement in its field offices by Representative Primicia Sagabas.
To the Committee on Suffrage and Electoral Reforms.
House Bill 3204, declaring a parcel of land located in certain municipalities in Zamboanga del Norte as a Mount Gutom protected landscape by Representative Labadlabad.
To the Committee on Natural Resources.
House Bill 3205, creating two additional branches of the RTC and five additional branches of the MTCC in the ninth judicial region to be stationed in Zamboanga del Norte by Representative Labadlabad.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill 3206, declaring December twenty-three of every year a special non-working holiday in Sindangan Zamboanga del Norte to be known as Aro ng Sindangan by Representative Labadlabad.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 3207, providing for the bill of rights and obligations of taxpayers by Representatives Garcia Dante and Tereng.
To the Committee on Ways and Means.
House Bill 3208, mandating Philippine consular offices and service attaches abroad to operate during official holidays of host countries and at least two weekend days a month to enable overseas Filipinos to transact business without loss of income by Representatives Tereng and Garcia Dante.
To the Committee on Overseas Workers Affairs.
House Bill 3285, mandating the establishment of agri-food terminals and trading centers in every province by Representative Degamo.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 3286, mandating the establishment of Kadiwa Centers as agri-food terminals and trading centers in third district, in the third district of Negros Oriental by Representative Degamo.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 3287, establishing the Municipality of Seattle Women and Children Protection Center by Representative Degamo.
To the Committee on Women and Gender Equality.
House Bill Numbers 3288 and 3291, declaring several roads in certain municipalities of Davao Oriental as national roads by Representative Dayangira.
To the Committee on Public Works and Highways.
House Bill 3292, creating the San Rafael Special Economic Zone Authority in San Rafael Bulakan by Representative Yolago.
To the Committee on Economic Affairs and the Committee on Trade and Industry.
House Bill 3293, establishing a national framework for mandatory environmental insurance coverage of environmentally critical projects by Representative Atayde.
To the Committee on Ecology.
House Bill 3294, establishing the Science for Change Program by Representative Atayde.
To the Committee on Science and Technology.
House Bill 3295, upgrading the classification of Partido District Office of the LTO in Tigawon Camarinesur from Class D to Class C District Office by Representative Fuente Belia.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 3296, establishing the Speaker Arnufo Noli P. Fuente Belia Training Center Tesca Cap Simas Partido Campus in Tigawon Camarinesur by Representative Fuente Belia.
To the Committee on Hire and Technical Education.
House Bill 3297, establishing the San Rafael National High School for the Arts in San Rafael Tigawon Camarinesur by Representative Fuente Belia.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 3298, establishing the Economic Zone and Freeport in Southern Leyte by Representative Mercado.
To the Committee on Economic Affairs and the Committee on Trade and Industry.
House Bill 3299, creating a province called Moro Province for the special geographic area Bangsa Mora Autonomous Region in Muslimindanaw by Representatives Mendoza, Santos, Maria, Alana Samatha and Cruzado.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 3300, upgrading the LTO District Office in Dagupan City Pangkasinan from Class B to Class A by Representative de Venesia.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 3301, institutionalizing the Assistance to Individuals in Crisis Situation Program of the DSWD by Representative Almonte.
To the Committee on Social Services.
House Bill 3302, providing for the Magna Carta of barangay health workers by Representative Almonte.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 3303, establishing air passengers' rights and compensation for delayed and canceled flights by Representative Pumaren.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 3304, establishing the National Transportation Safety Board by Representative Pumaren.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 3305, converting the Municipality of Liloan in the province of Cebu into a component city to be known as the City of Liloan by Representative Frasco.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 3306, creating the Community Health Worker Education and Training Program by Representative Frasco.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 3307, requiring the establishment of dialysis clinics in all national, regional and provincial hospitals and providing for free dialysis treatments to indigent patients by Representative Frasco.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 3308, providing for affordable funeral services to indigents by Representative Frasco.
To the Committee on Trade and Industry.
House Bill 3309, establishing a domestic commercial airport in San Francisco, Cebu by Representative Frasco.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 3310, declaring the Cebu Safari and Adventure Park located in Corte Carmen, Cebu a tourism destination by Representative Frasco.
To the Committee on Tourism.
House Bill 3311, declaring the Baakai Point Lighthouse in Liloan, Cebu as a tourist destination by Representative Frasco.
To the Committee on Tourism.
House Bill 3312, declaring Santiago Public Beach in Camotes Islands, San Francisco, Cebu as a tourist destination by Representative Frasco.
To the Committee on Tourism.
House Bill 3313, upgrading the Cebu Provincial Hospital in the now city Cebu into the North Cebu Medical Center by Representative Frasco.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 3314, providing for the establishment of the Heart Center of the Philippines Visayas in Liloan, Cebu by Representative Frasco.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 3315, rationalizing the management of natural resources in Camotes Island, Cebu by Representative Frasco.
To the Committee on Natural Resources.
House Bill 3316 to 3319, converting several roads in certain areas in the province of Cebu into national roads by Representative Frasco.
To the Committee on Public Works and Highways.
House Bill Number 3320 and 3321, establishing the Cebu Normal University Katmon Campus and Cebu Normal University Porocampus in Katmon and Poros Cebu respectively by Representative Frasco.
To the Committee on Hire and Technical Education.
House Bill 3322, providing for the construction and establishment of Sogod Cebu International Airport in Sogod Cebu by Representative Frasco.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 3323, promoting inclusive education, entrepreneurship and employment for sustainable development among four-piece adult beneficiaries by Representatives Abalos and Libanan.
To the Committee on Poverty alleviation.
House Bill 3324, providing indigent job seekers discounted or waived fees and charges in the issuance of certain pre-employment documents issued by government agencies by Representatives Abalos and Libanan.
To the Committee on Poverty alleviation.
House Bill 3325, declaring every fourth Friday of October as a special non-working holiday for the Wolf Province of Negros Oriental in celebration of the Buglasan Festival by Representative Sagabaria.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 3326, amending certain parcel articles of the Labor Code of the Philippines by Representative Sagabaria.
To the Committee on Labor and Employment.
House Bill 3327, converting the provincial road which traverses from the national highway in Tanhai City to certain barangays until the national road going to Mabinay Kalumboyan to Bayawan City into a national road by Representative Sagabaria.
To the Committee on Public Works and Highways.
House Bill Number 3328, establishing the Negros Oriental Rehabilitation Center in Amlang Negros Oriental by Representative Sagabaria.
To the Committee on Dangerous Drugs.
House Bill 3329, granting a franchise to the Negros Oriental One Electric Cooperative Inc. by Representative Sagabaria.
To the Committee on Legislative Franchises.
House Bill 3330, amending the Sugar Development Act of 2015 by Representative Sagabaria.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill Numbers 3331 to 3333, to 33344, declaring certain falls and caves located in several areas in Cagayan di Oro City mis amis oriental as ecotourism sites by Representatives Rodriguez Maximo and Rodriguez Rufus.
To the Committee on Tourism.
House Bill Numbers 3345 to 3350, establishing community forests in certain barangays in the second district of Cagayan di Oro City mis amis oriental by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
To the Special Committee on Reforestation.
House Bill 3351, establishing the Novadichas Health Center and Lying-in Clinic in Novadichas proper Quezon City by Representative Vargas.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 3352, establishing the Novadichas Sports Training Center in the fifth district of Quezon City by Representative Vargas.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Bill 3353, establishing an onsite, in-city or near-city resettlement program for informal settor families by Representative Vargas.
To the Committee on Housing and Urban Development.
House Bill 3354, establishing the Philippine Geriatric Health and Research Institute by Representative Vargas.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 3355, creating a database of products containing probable carcinogens by Representative Vargas.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 3356, lowering the optional retirement age for public school teachers from sixty years old to fifty-five years old by Representative Vargas.
To the Committee on Government Enterprises and Privatization.
House Bill 3357, authorizing the construction of the Quezon City District Five Sports Arena in Fairview, Quezon City by Representative Vargas.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Bill 3358, ensuring safe drinking water by Representative Vargas.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 3359, establishing an onsite, in-city, near-city or off-city local government resettlement program for informal settor families by Representative de Lima.
To the Committee on Housing and Urban Development.
House Bill 3360, establishing the national framework for water resource management by Representative Roque.
To the Committee on Public Works and Highways and the Committee on Government Reorganization.
House Bill 3361, requiring or graduating senior high school and college students to plant two trees each as a civic duty by Representative Montez.
To the Special Committee on Reforestation.
House Bill 3362, establishing an agriculture information system in all cities and municipalities by Representative Montez.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 3363, rationalizing the benefits and privileges of senior citizens and PWDs by Representative Montez.
To the Committee on Ways and Means, the Committee on Senior Citizens and the Special Committee on Persons with Disabilities.
House Bill 3364, strengthening the national program for the elimination of tuberculosis by Representative Montez.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 3365, to increase campus security and crime awareness, installing CCTV cameras in all schools by Representative Lakson.
To the Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill 3366, establishing the Sikihor Special Economic Zone Authority in Maria Sikihor by Representative Villa.
To the Committee on Economic Affairs and the Committee on Trade and Industry.
House Bill 3367, establishing an intergovernmental task force for the protection and assistance of tourists by Representative Villa.
To the Committee on Tourism.
House Bill 3368, converting the Sikihor State College in the Larina Sikihor including its extension campus in Lazis Sikihor into a state university by Representative Villa.
To the Committee on Hire and Technical Education.
House Bill 3369, providing for a postal tourism planning development program by Representative Villa.
To the Committee on Tourism.
House Bill 3370, establishing welfare homes for destitute persons by Representative Villa.
To the Committee on Social Services.
House Bill 3371, granting Philippine citizenship to Michael John Butler by Representative Villa.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill 3372, providing incentives to all barangay officials and employees by Representative Villa.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 3373, further granting the director of the PNP Anti-Cybercrime Group the authority to administer oath and to issue subpoena and subpoena ducestecum by Representative Villa.
To the Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill 3374 and 3375, amending certain sections of the Local Government Code of 1991 by Representative Villa.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 3376, establishing the Western Philippines Multi-Specialty Medical Center by Representatives Alvarez Jose and Acosta.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 3377, strengthening the Philippine Bamboo Industry Development Council by Representatives Alba, Flores, Rocket, Zuberi, Ion and Velozotuazon.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 3378, an act providing for a five-year validity period of the professional identification cards of all professionals under the Professional Regulation Commission by Representatives Romualdes Ferdinand Martin and Daza.
To the Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation.
House Bill 3379, instituting a comprehensive national autism spectrum disorder program by Representative Benitez Alfredo.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 3380, creating a Department of Fisheries and Aquatic Resources by Representatives Horibata, Villa Ferte Vincenzo Renato Luigi, Villa Ferte Miguel Luis and Redon.
To the Committee on Aquaculture and Fisheries Resources and the Committee on Government Reorganization.
House Bill Numbers 3381 to 3385, establishing fish ports in certain municipalities in Camarinesur by Representatives Horibata, Villa Ferte Vincenzo Renato Luigi, Villa Ferte Miguel Luis and Redon.
To the Committee on Aquaculture and Fisheries Resources.
House Bill Numbers 3386 and 3387, establishing satellite multi-species marine hatcheries in Pasakau and San Fernando, province of Camarinesur by Representatives Horibata, Villa Ferte Vincenzo Renato Luigi, Villa Ferte Miguel Luis and Redon.
To the Committee on Aquaculture and Fisheries Resources.
House Bill 3388, providing a fuel subsidy for municipal fisherfolk by Representatives Horibata, Villa Ferte Vincenzo Renato Luigi, Villa Ferte Miguel Luis and Redon.
To the Committee on Aquaculture and Fisheries Resources.
House Bill 3389, creating the Philippine Seaweed Development Authority by Representatives Horibata, Villa Ferte Vincenzo Renato Luigi, Villa Ferte Miguel Luis and Redon.
To the Committee on Aquaculture and Fisheries Resources.
House Bill 3390, strengthening the Philippine Coast Guard by introducing policy and organizational reforms by Representative Bankoro.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 3391, establishing in Malangas Zamboanga Cibugay the Balangas Medical Center by Representative Bankoro.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 3392, enhancing the national shelter program by Representative Popilar.
To the Committee on Housing and Urban Development.
House Bill 3393, providing for the development of sustainable cities and communities in the country by Representative Popilar.
To the Committee on Housing and Urban Development.
House Bill 3394, mandating the allocation of an area for ICT infrastructure and facilities in subdivisions and housing development projects by Representative Popilar.
To the Committee on Housing and Urban Development.
House Bill 3395, institutionalizing dynamic learning program as a national master-based as a national master-based independent learning strategy in the K to twelve basic education, by Representative Popilar.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill three, three, nine, six, establishing a nationwide nationwide land classification framework, by Representative Luistro.
To the Special Committee on Land Use.
House Bill three, three, nine, seven, improving the mental and behavioral health services in college and university campuses, by Representative Vargas.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill three, three, nine, eight, promoting the rights and welfare of nurses, by Representative Vargas.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill three, three, nine, nine, creating the National Museum of Filipino Women, by Representative Vargas.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill three, four, zero, zero, promoting women's participation and representation in and by political parties, by Representative Vargas.
To the Committee on Women and Gender Equality.
House Bill three, four, zero, one, creating a national women's business enterprise policy, by Representative Vargas.
To the Committee on Women and Gender Equality.
House Bill three, four, zero, two, mandating the inclusion of the blood type of individuals in their birth certificates, by Representative Vargas.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill three, four, zero, three, institutionalizing the community-driven development approach as a national strategy for inclusive growth and social protection, by Representative Vargas.
To the Committee on Poverty alleviation.
House Bill three, four, zero, four, providing free childcare centers in every municipality and city, by Representative Vargas.
To the Committee on Welfare of Children.
House Bill three, four, zero, five, to ensure gender-responsive and inclusive protocols and programming to address the gender-differentiated needs of women during public health emergencies, public health threats, disasters, and other health events of public concern, by Representative Vargas.
To the Committee on Women and Gender Equality.
House Bill three, four, zero, six, providing for the public disclosure of the standard cost of drugs, procedures, and services by hospitals and ambulatory surgical centers, by Representative Vargas.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill three, four, zero, seven, declaring a parcel of land of the public domain located in certain barangays in Jose, Pirizal, Palawan as agricultural land and open to disposition for agricultural, commercial, residential, and industrial use, by Representatives Alvarez, Jose, and Acosta.
To the Committee on Natural Resources.
House Bill three, four, zero, eight, prohibiting the conversion of irrigated and irrigable agricultural lands for non-agricultural uses, by Representative Odukado.
To the Committee on Agrarian Reform.
Resolutions, House Resolution one, one, six, directing the House through the Committees on Human Rights and Justice to conduct a joint investigation into the systemic human rights violations, retaliatory actions, and abusive practices of the Bureau of Corrections, including the permanent ban imposed on Fides lib, by Representatives Tinio and Coriné Luis.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution one, one, seven, urging the Committee on Labor and Employment and other appropriate House committees to conduct an investigation on the response and handling of the maritime incidents involving Filipino crew members onboard vessels that were attacked and sank at the Red Sea, by Representative Amentado.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution one, one, eight, urging the House to exercise its oversight function and to conduct an investigation on the implementation of the Local Government Code and EO number one, three, eight, Series of twenty twenty-one, in light of the Mandanas Garcia ruling, by Representative Co Wilton.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution one, one, nine, expressing the sense of the House to expand the services of the Philippine Crop Insurance Corporation, by Representative Cruzado.
To the Committee on Government Enterprises and Privatization.
House Resolution one, two, zero, a resolution expressing profound congratulations to the Philippine Men's National Tennis Team for earning a promotion to Group Three Asia Oceana Zone of the Davis Cup, by Representatives Romualdes, Ferdinand Martin, Marcos, Libanan, and Daza.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution one, two, one, expressing the great pride and joy of Filipinos in the gold medal victory of legit status in the twenty twenty-five World Hip-Hop Dance Championship held last July twenty-six, twenty twenty-five, to August two, twenty twenty-five in USA, by Representative Tolentino.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Resolution one, two, two, expressing the great pride and joy of Filipinos in the victory of Carlo Biado in the World Pool Championship held in Saudi Arabia last July twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five, by Representative Tolentino.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Resolution one, two, three, directing the Committee on Agriculture and Food to conduct an inquiry into the sustainability of the Benting Bigas Merona Program of the Department of Agriculture, by Representative Benitez Alfredo.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution one, two, four, directing the Committee on Transportation to conduct an inquiry on the implementation of the mandated use of arrow bridges in all airports, by Representative Benitez Alfredo.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution one, two, five, directing the Committee on Health to conduct inquiry on the reported delay in guarantee letter reimbursement and denial late payments of Philhealth claims, by Representative Benitez Alfredo.
To the Committee on Rules.
Additional Reference of Business Resolution, House Concurrent Resolution Number Four, titled Concurrent Resolution amending the legislative calendar for the first regular session of the twentieth Congress of the Philippines, by Representatives Marcos and Libanan.
To the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move to suspend session.
Session suspended. Session resumed.
Mister Speaker, may I request that we recognize the guest of Honorable Tobias Toby Chanko, Lone District of Nabota City, uh, Nabotas City Youth Official.
To the distinguished guests of Honorable Chanko, welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, may I request that we recognize the guest of Honorable Roman T. Romulo, Lone District, Pasig City, Axel Bakunawa, Junior Congressman for Pasig City.
Mister Axel Bakunawa is welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, may I request also that we recognize the guest of Honorable Congressman Brian Yamsuan, of Paranyake City District Two, barangay San Martin de Forest, namely barangay captain Telma Cuico Singson, barangay kagawad Michael Thor Singson, barangay kagawad Joy Bernalis Garrido, barangay kagawad Joseline Quesada Bautista, barangay kagawad Josephine Dalamon Ramos, barangay kagawad J. Mark Pahardo Salomon, barangay kagawad Carlo Kadag Millano, barangay kagawad Roldan C. Macabata, SK Chairwoman Josephine Dalanon Ramos, SK kagawad Haron Ibarreta Katakutan, SK kagawad Ome, Omebi, O, O, Ome, Oni, Onib, Palanya, SK kagawad Jobilin Escalante Grafil, SK kagawad Kurt Wiesel Pontelera Belarmino, SK kagawad Eliza May Ferrer Del Rosario and Shani Salvante.
To the distinguished guests of Honorable Yamsuan, welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, may I request that we recognize the guest of Representative Nico Raúl S. Daza, Representative First District Northern Samar, guest from Northern Samar, Municipal Counselor Maricor Jingai G. Mendador of the LGU Catarman.
The Honorable Maricor Jingai Mendador of Catarman is welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, may I request that we recognize the guest of Representative Leonel Jong D. Senisa, Second District of Davao de Oro, Pastor Alfonso Aytabas, and Attorney Cherisel Lau Tabas.
The distinguished guests of Honorable Leonel Jong Senisa of the Second District of Davao de Oro is welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, may I request that we recognize the guest of the Honorable Brian Po, EPIJ Pandai Bayanihan Partiles, National and Local Officers and Members, EPIJ Youth, Gacy Agutierrez, National Director for Policy and Advocacy, Sandro Artillano, National Spokesperson, Kate Manalo, Deputy Secretary General for NCR, Jim Fernández, Deputy Secretary General for Luzon, Casey Carrillo, President, EPIJ Youth Manila, Mary Joy de los Reyes, Secretary for EPIJ Youth Caloocan, Camille Magaya, Secretary for EPIJ Youth, Quezon City, Amiel Pilagio, Member, EPIJ Youth, Dominic Nico Abustan, President, EPIJ Youth Camarines Norte, Gianpaolo Taguba, Vice President, EPIJ Youth, Quezon City, Chian Ángelés, National Treasurer, EPIJ Youth, and Noah Priyo, National Director for Logistics, EPIJ Youth.
To the distinguished guests of Honorable Brian Po, welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, may I request that we recognize the guest of Honorable Brian Po, EPIJ Pandai Bayanihan Partiles, Dipangasinan Vice Mayor and Counselors, Vice Mayor JM Crisostomo Lingayen, Consigliable Lillian Maramba Mangaldan, Richard Raquel, Consigrena Tamundong, San Carlos City, Consi Norman Roset Burgos, Consi JJ Carrera, Imali, Considanica Tanto Dagupan City, Considariel, Bataan, Aguilar, Consi Edren, Yanilo Bugalyon, Consi Monica Ramos, Basista, Consi Gina Oyaman Sison, Consi Marvin Karanay Anda, Consi Michael B. Tayog, Consi Garius Dulay San Nicolas, and Pauline Regatto.
To the distinguished officials of, uh, Pangasinan from Vice Mayor JM Crisostomo and all the counselors, welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move to suspend session for a few minutes.
Session suspended. Session. Session resumed. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we recognize the gentleman from the Lone District of Southern Late, Congressman Oging Mercado, for a short manifestation.
Congressman Mercado is recognized.
Thank you very much, uh, uh, Majority Floor Leader and, uh, Mister Speaker. Uh, Southern Late now, Mister Speaker, is, uh, composed of two districts. So I represent the, uh, Southern Late First District, Mister Speaker. Thank you very much. Anyway, uh, under, uh, Rule Two, uh, Section Seven, uh, Letter B, uh, all members are required to attend, uh, Plenary Session, Mister Speaker, and, uh, our journal, uh, number three, dated Monday, August four, twenty twenty-five, this humble representation, I would like to avail of, uh, Section Seventy-One, Rule, uh, Eleven of the provisional rules of the House, where, uh, during that day, Mister Speaker, I was, uh, uh, this humble representation, attended a committee meeting with the, uh, Committee on Government Finance. So, uh, uh, it appears that, uh, there is only one asterisk in my name, so I would like to request that, uh, uh, Section Seventy-One be, uh, applied, uh, in my case, Mister Speaker. Thank you very much.
Yes, uh, the Secretary General is, uh, instructed to make the proper correction, uh, Honorable Mercado. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Thank you, Majority Leader.
Majority Leader.
Yes, Mister Speaker, on the part of the majority, I move to nominate and elect to the Committee on Accounts as Vice Chairperson, Miguel Luis R. Vilafuerte. To the Committee on Appropriations as members, Denise Almario, Milagros Aquino Magcaysay, Munir M. Arbison, Juan Carlos Atayde, Angelo Marcos Barba, Alfilito Bascog, Claudine Bautista Lim, Ferdinand Beltran, Javier Benítez, Patricia Calderón, Timothy Caiton, Katrina Chuatay, Victoria Copilar, Ricardo S. Cruz, Maximo Dalog Junior, Wilfredo Marc Enverga, Felimon Espares, Antonio Ferrer, Soyoshi Hori Hori Bata, Emmanuel Iwai, Nina Lacson, Jose Florendo Lagnameo, Carlos Loria, Isidro Lumayag, Nathaniel Odukado, Antolin Oreta the Third, Edibong G. Plaza, La Arni Lavinroque, Mark Anthony Santos, Richel Singson, Kenneth Policy Tereng, Ralph Tulfo, Rolando Valeriano, Florabel C. Yatko, Rebecca Inárez, and Richard Gómez. To the Committee on Agriculture and Food as Vice Chairperson, Arnan C. Panaligan. As members, Bella Swan Singh and Julius Vergara. To the Committee on Aquaculture and Fisheries Resources as member, Anna P. York Bondok. To the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries as member, Rolando Valeriano and Francisco Kiko Barzaga. To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture as member, Carmelo Lasatin. To the Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation as Vice Chairperson, Anna York Bondok. As members, Antolin Oreta the Third, Bella Swan, and Bella Swan Singh. To the Committee on Constitutional Amendments as members, Victoria Copilar and Antolin Oreta the Third. To the Committee on Cooperatives Development as members, Anna York Bondok and Alexandria P. González. To the Committee on Disaster Resilience as Vice Chairperson, Javier Miguel López Benítez, and as member, Anna York Bondok. To the Committee on Ecology as Vice Chairperson, Anna York Bondok and as member, Linabel Ruth Villarica. To the Committee on Economic To the Committee on Economic Affairs as Vice Chairperson, Ana Veloso Tuason and as member, Ana York Bondok. To the Committee on Energy as member, Carlos Andes Loria. To the Committee on Flagship Programs and Projects as member, Marcelino Marcí Teodoro. And to the Committee on Foreign Affairs as Vice Chairpersons, Adriana Advincula and Claudine Diana Bautista Lim. To the Committee on Health as Vice Chairpersons, Claudine Diana Bautista Lim and Gurli Veloso Vice Jude Asidre. As member, Ferdinand L. Hernández. To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education as Vice Chairperson, Ferdinand L. Hernández and as member, Bella Swan Singh. To the Committee on Human Rights as Vice Chairperson, Marlo Bancoro. To the Committee on Information and Communications Technology as Senior Vice Chairperson, Chino Miguel Almario. As member, Sun Shimura. To the Committee on Interparliamentary Relations and Diplomacy as members, Linabel Villarica and Maria Cristina C. Ángeles. To the Committee on Justice as member, Ana York P. Bondok. To the Committee on Legislative Franchises as member, Javier Miguel López Benítez. To the Committee on Micro, Small and Medium Enterprise Development as member, Julius J. Vergara. To the Committee on Mindanao Affairs as Vice Chairperson, Serlin Banyas Nograles and as members, Marlo Bancoro, Marleesa Hofer Hasim, and Bella Swan Singh. To the Committee on National Defense and Security as Vice Chairpersons, Arlen Panaligan and Richard I. Gómez. As members, Solomon Chunggalau, Marc Enverga, Arni Fuentabelia, José Álvarez, Emilio Tanwatco III. To the Committee on Natural Resources as member, Liody Tariela. And to the Committee on Poverty alleviation as member, Bella Swan Singh. To the Committee on Public Order and Safety as Vice Chairperson, Romeo Acop. To the Committee on the Revision of Laws as member, Marlo Bancoro. To the Committee on Rural Development as Vice Chairpersons, Emmanuel Iwai and Isidro Lumayag. To the Committee on Tourism as member, Yeda Marie Kei Romualdes. To the Committee on Trade and Industry as member, Marleesa Doc Marley Hofer Hasim. To the Committee on Transportation as Senior Vice Chairperson, Ramon Rodrigo Elguillares. As Vice Chairperson, Romeo Acop, Ferdinand Hernández, Claudine Diana Bautista Lim and as member, Agustina Dominique C. Pancho. To the Committee on Veterans Affairs and Welfare as member, Romeo Acop. To the Committee on Visayas Development as member, Javier López Benítez. To the Committee on Welfare of Children as member, Marleesa Doc Marley Hofer Hasim and Bella Swan Singh. To the Committee on Women and Gender Equality as members, Linabel Ruth Villarica and Marleesa Hofer Hasim. To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development as Vice Chairperson, Richard I. Gómez. To the Special Committee on West Philippine Sea as Senior Vice Chairperson, Richard Gómez. To the Special Committee on Vehicle Affairs and Economic Development as Vice Chairperson, José Bong Tevez Jr. To the Special Committee on East ASEAN Growth Area as Vice Chairperson, Serlin Banyas Nograles. To the Special Committee on Peace, Reconciliation, and Unity as Vice Chairperson, Marlo C. Bancoro. And to the Special Committee on Persons with Disabilities as Vice Chairperson, Catherine Goriseta. I so move.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, on the part of the majority, I also move to nominate and elect to the Special Committee on Basis Conversion as Chairperson, Arturo B. Robes Vice Marcio Tomogan. To the Committee on Indigenous Cultural Communities and Indigenous Peoples as Chairperson, Mauricio G. Tomogan. I so move.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I also move to nominate and elect to the Committee on Foreign Affairs as Vice Chairperson, Vincent Franco Duke de Frasco. I so move.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to suspend.
Session suspended. Session resumed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to recognize the Honorable Minority Leader Marcelino Libanan.
Honorable Libanan, our minority leader is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Mr. Majority Leader. Speaker, I would like to nominate the following as members for the minority of the different committees. To the Committee on Accounts, Arlen Ayon, Nico Raúl Dasa, Raquel, Margarit Delmar, Christopher Sheen González, Gian Ruric Padiernos. The Committee on Agrarian Reform, Nico Raúl Dasa, Elijah San Fernando. The Committee on Agriculture and Food, Alan Uy, Alan Yuti, Rene Luisco, Christopher Sheen González, Paulo Henry Marcolita, Iris Marie Montez, Roberto Gerard Nasal Jr., Gian Ruric Padiernos, Elijah San Fernando, and Audrey Kay Zubery. To the Appropriations Committee, Jonathan Clement Avalos, Alan T., Arlen Ayon, Rene Luisco, Nico Raúl Dasa, José Manuel Jocno, Christopher Sheen González, Paulo Henry Marcolita, Iris Marie Montez, Roberto Gerard Nasal Jr., Gian Ruric Padiernos, and Elijah San Fernando. To the Committee on Agriculture and Fisheries Resources, and to the Committee on Appropriations still, Audrey Kay Zubery. To the Committee on Aquaculture, Fisheries and Fisheries Resources, Nico Raúl Dasa, Raquel, Margarit Delmar, Christopher Sheen González. To the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries, Terry El Ridón, Roberto Gerard Nasal Jr., Gian Ruric Padiernos. To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture, Jonathan Clement Avalos, Alan T., Rene Luisco, José Manuel Jocno, Christopher Sheen González, and Audrey Kay Zubery. To the Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation, Arlen Ayon, Gian Ruric Padiernos. To the Committee on Climate Change, Nico Raúl Dasa, Iris Marie Montez. To the Committee on Constitutional Amendments, Jonathan Clement Avalos, Rene Luisco, José Manuel Jocno, Gian Ruric Padiernos. To the Committee on Cooperatives and Cooperatives Development, Christopher Sheen González. To the Committee on Disaster Resilience, Christopher Sheen González, Paulo Henry Marcolita, Roberto Gerard Nasal Jr. To the Committee on Ecology, Rene Luisco, Iris Marie Montez. To the Committee on Economic Affairs, Roberto Gerard Nasal Jr., Audrey Kay Zubery. To the Committee on Energy, Terry Ridón, Alan T., Nico Raúl Dasa, Raquel, Margarit Delmar, and Roberto Gerard Nasal Jr. and Gian Ruric Padiernos. To the Committee on Ethics and Privileges, José Manuel Jocno. To the Committee on Flagship Programs and Projects, Dada Karam Ismola, Audrey Kay Zubery. To the Committee on Foreign Affairs, Jonathan Clement Avalos, Terry Ridón, Raquel, Margarit Delmar, Christopher Sheen González, Paulo Henry Marcolita. To the Committee on Games and Amusement, Terry Ridón, Nico Raúl Dasa, Raquel, Margarit Delmar, Christopher Sheen González, Audrey Kay Zubery. To the Committee on Good Government and Public Accountability, Terry Ridón, Renez Luisco, Iris Marie Montez, Roberto Gerard Nasal Jr. To the Committee on Government Enterprises and Privatization, Nico Raúl Dasa, Elijah San Fernando. To the Committee on Government and Organization, José Manuel Jocno, Gian Ruric Padiernos. To the Committee on Health, Arlen Ayon, Nico Raúl Dasa, Christopher Sheen González, Iris Marie Montez, Roberto Gerard Nasal Jr., Gian Ruric Padiernos, Elijah San Fernando, and Audrey Kay Zubery. To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education, Jonathan Clement Avalos, Rene Luisco, Nico Raúl Dasa, José Manuel Jocno, Elijah San Fernando, and Audrey Kay Zubery. To the Committee on Housing and Urban Development, Terry Ridón, Gian Ruric Padiernos, Elijah San Fernando. To the Committee on Indigenous Cultural Communities and Indigenous Peoples, Dada Karam Ismola, Audrey Kay Zubery. To the Committee on Information and Communications Technology, Arlen Ayon, Rene Luisco, Nico Raúl Dasa, Roberto Gerard Nasal Jr., Gian Ruric Padiernos. To the Committee on Interparliamentary Relations and Diplomacy, Jonathan Clement Avalos, Raquel, Margarit Delmar, Christopher Sheen González, Roberto Gerard Nasal Jr., and Audrey Kay Zubery. To the Committee on Justice, Terry Ridón, Alan T., Rene Luisco, José Manuel Jocno, Gian Ruric Padiernos. To the Committee on Labor and Employment, Alan T., Rene Luisco, Christopher Sheen González, and Elijah San Fernando. To the Committee on Legislative Franchises, Arlen Ayon, Nico Raúl Dasa, Raquel, Margarit Delmar, Christopher Sheen González, and Gian Ruric Padiernos. To the Committee on Local Government, Arlen Ayon, Raquel, Margarit Delmar, José Manuel Jocno, Christopher Sheen González, and Audrey Kay Zubery. To the Committee on Metro Manila Development, Jonathan Clement Avalos, Iris Marie Montez, Roberto Gerard Nasal Jr., Elijah San Fernando. To the Committee on Micro, Small and Medium Enterprise Development, Iris Marie Montez, Elijah San Fernando. To the Committee on Mindanao Affairs, Dada Karam Ismola, Audrey Kay Zubery. To the Committee on Muslim Affairs, Dada Karam Ismola, Audrey Kay Zubery. To the Committee on National Defense and Security, Jonathan Clement Avalos, Alan T., and Christopher Sheen González. To the Committee on Natural Resources, Terry Ridón, Arlen Ayon, Rene Luisco, Christopher Sheen González, Roberto Gerard Nasal Jr. To the Committee on North Luzon Growth Quadrangle, Alan T., Elijah San Fernando. To the Committee on Overseas Workers Affairs, Arlen Ayon, Dada Karam Ismola. To the Committee on People's Participation, Elijah San Fernando. To the Committee on Population and Family Relations, Jonathan Clement Avalos, Audrey Kay Zubery. To the Committee on Poverty alleviation, Jonathan Clement Avalos, Rene Luisco, Paulo Henry Marcolita. To the Committee on Information, Paulo Henry Marcolita, Audrey Kay Zubery. To the Committee on Public Works and Highways, Terry Ridón, Alan T., Arlen Ayon, Christopher Sheen González, Roberto Gerard Nasal Jr. To the Committee on Revision of Laws, Jonathan Clement Avalos, José Manuel Jocno. To the Committee on Rules, to the Committee on Rural Development, Nico Raúl Dasa, Elijah San Fernando. To the Committee on Science and Technology, Roberto Gerard Nasal, Gian Ruric Padiernos. To the Committee on Senior Citizens, Arlen Ayon, Christopher Sheen González. To the Committee on Social Services, Jonathan Clement Avalos, Christopher Sheen González, Dada Karam Ismola, and Elijah San Fernando. To the Committee on Suffrage and Electoral Reforms, Jonathan Clement Avalos, Rene Luisco. To the Committee on Sustainable Development Goals, Arlen Ayon, Iris Marie Montez. To the Committee on Tourism, Arlen Ayon, Nico Raúl Dasa, Raquel, Margarit Delmar, and Christopher Sheen González. To the Committee on Trade and Industry, Terry Ridón, Alan T., Roberto Gerard Nasal, Iris Marie Montez. To the Committee on Transportation, Jonathan Clement Avalos, Terry Ridón, Arlen Ayon, Rene Luisco, Christopher Sheen González, Roberto Gerard Nasal Jr., Gian Ruric Padiernos, and Elijah San Fernando. To the Committee on Veterans Affairs and Welfare, Alan T., José Manuel Jocno. To the Committee on Visayas Development, Nico Raúl Dasa, Raquel, Margarit Delmar, and Christopher Sheen González. To the Committee on Ways and Means, Terry Ridón, Alan T., Nico Raúl Dasa, Christopher Sheen González, Roberto Gerard Nasal Jr., Gian Ruric Padiernos, Elijah San Fernando. To the Committee on Welfare of Children, Rene Luisco, José Manuel Jocno, Audrey Kay Zubery. To the Committee on Women and Gender Equality, Arlen Ayon, Rene Luisco, Dada Karam Ismola, Iris Marie Montez, and Audrey Kay Zubery. The Committee on Youth and Sports Development, Rene Luisco, Nico Raúl Dasa, Christopher Sheen González. To the Special Committees, Basis Conversion, Honorable Roberto Gerard Nasal. To the Vehicle Affairs and Economic Development, Terry Ridón. To the Committee on Creative Industries, Rene Luisco and Raquel, Margarit Delmar. To the Committee on East Asian Growth Area, Jonathan Clement Avalos, José Manuel Jocno. To the Committee on Food Security, Arlen Ayon. To the Committee on Globalization and WTO, Alan T. To the Committee on Land Use, Audrey Kay Zubery. To the Committee on Nuclear Energy, Jonathan Clement Avalos, Arlen Ayon, José Manuel Jocno. To the Committee on Peace, Reconciliation, and Unity, Terry Ridón, Rene Luisco. To the Committee on Persons with Disabilities, Arlen Ayon, Raquel, Margarit Delmar. The Committee on Report Station, Christopher Sheen González, Nico Raúl Dasa. To the Committee on Southern Tagalog Development, Iris Marie Montez. To the Committee on Strategic Intelligence, Gian Ruric Padiernos. To the Committee on West Philippine Sea, Alan T., José Manuel Jocno. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. That would be all for now.
Thank you, Minority Leader. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, with leave of the House, I move to resume the privilege hour.
Is there any objection? Hearing none, the same is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to recognize the lady from Mamamayang Liberal Party List, the Honorable Representative Lila de Lima to avail of the privilege hour.
The representative from Party List ML, the former senator, now representative, Lila de Lima is recognized.
Mararami salamat po, Mr. Speaker, and the Majority Leader. First off, tahingin ko po ang inyong pasensya, ang inyong indulgence, kasi po may kahabaan yung aking privilege speech. So lalo na po dun sa mga nakalista din po ngayon na magdedeliver ng privilege speech. Please bear with your colleague. Mr. Speaker, esteemed colleagues, as part of the minority, at katulad din po ni minority ng ating minority leader, Honorable Congressman Marcelino Libanan, karapatan ko at tungkulin kong manindigan para sa ating institusyon. I rise today to defend the honor and constitutional mandate of this House amid the controversy over the impeachment complaint against Vice President Sara Duterte. I was not part of the House yet when the articles of impeachment were filed in February 5, 2025 by more than one-third of the House membership. At that time, I served as spokesperson of one of the groups, the first group that lodged an impeachment complaint earlier in December. And like many Filipinos, I follow the impeachment process with keen interest. And now, as a member of the House and part of the minority, my stake in this issue is even deeper, especially after I was considered to serve as House Prosecutor in the impeachment trial along with Congressman Chael Jocno, that apparently might not even take place if the Supreme Court chooses to stand by its decision in Duterte versus House of Representatives. Let it be clear, it was not this institution that violated the Constitution. On the contrary, the House adhered faithfully to its constitutional duty to initiate an impeachment following clearly laid down and prevailing jurisprudence. Sadly, our co-equal branches have failed not only the Constitution but the Filipino people. Our message is simple: under our watch, the House's exclusive power to initiate impeachment will not be diminished. This is a power enshrined in the very framework of our democracy built upon the principles of checks and balances. Niluno'd ng technicalidad ang mga tunay na tanong, nasaan ang confidential funds? Sino sina Mary Jane Piatos, Fernando Tempura, Carlos Miguel Luís Che, Chippy McDonald, at ilan pang mga pangalan na tila ba ginawang chichirya ang pera ng bayan? Bakit may halos dalawang billion na umikot na pera sa joint bank accounts ni na Vice President Sara Duterte at ng kanyang ama na si Rodrigo Duterte? Sa gitna ng krisis edukasyon, bakit may akusasyon na nilalaro pa ang procurement ng Department of Education at ang kinabukasan ng ating mga kabataan? Tama ba ang pagbabantang ipapatay ang ating Pangulo, ang First Lady, and ating mismong Speaker of the House? Dear colleagues, these issues caught beyond partisan lines or personal ambition. They strike at the very heart of the principle that public office is of public trust. All public officials must be accountable to the people. When the House filed the impeachment complaint, it did so out of duty. It was not a power play, as some claim, but an exercise of its mandate to seek the truth and demand answers the Vice President never gave. Anggang ngayon, walang sagot sa mga isyung ito. Yet, in return, the House has been met with insults and accusations and a narrative reducing the solemn constitutional duty to mere politics. Today, I rise to, to set the record straight and call out these falsehoods. Nakamali, hilaw na sina ingdau na minadali ang pagkaluto? With due respect, this is patently false for the soundbite that it is. This House followed every constitutional requirement guided by Supreme Court precedents in Francisco versus House and Gutierrez versus House in crafting and timing this impeachment. Una, sinunod na't ng one-year bar rules upag file na impeachment complaint. There can be no application of the one-year bar rule because what the Supreme Court identified as a trigger, the so-called termination or archival of the other three impeachment complaints, happened after the House had already acted on the fourth complaint by transmitting the same to the Senate in accordance with Article 11, Section 3, Subparagraph 4 of the Constitution. Ito ang pinakateknikal sa desisyon ng Cortes Suprema. Para nitong pinilit palabasin ng tatlong complaints na iniain sa first mode, actually is supposed to be first and second modes, ay nagsilbing hadlang sa articles of impeachment na iniain ng kapulungan ito gamit ang second mode na one-third vote. Actually, it's supposed to be third mode, but to be consistent with the Supreme Court ruling and also the motion for reconsideration of the Soljen or the Office of the Solicitor General, I shall also refer to it as the second mode. Pero ang hilaw dito ay hindi ang articles of impeachment, kundi ang paliwanag ng Cortes Suprema. Sabi nga ng Soljen sa ating motion for reconsideration, ang articles of impeachment na iniain ng House gamit ang second mode o sa katunayan third mode, ang siyang humadlang sa tatlong iba pang complaint. Binaliktad ng Cortes Suprema ang totoong nangyari. Mr. Speaker, I respectfully but firmly submit, the one-year bar rule has been abused and twisted in this instance to frustrate accountability for the highest officials of the land. The rule should be read and interpreted strictly in favor of accountability. It cannot be weaponized to make impeachment even harder. Napakahirap na nga lang proseso, lalo pang pinahirapan. Impeachable officials already stand as a class of their own, over and above all other government officials. Struggle na yata kung bibigyan pa ng special protection sa impeachment ang mga special officials na ito. Ano ang special treatment na binigay kay VP Sara Duterte? Gumawa sila ng mga bagong rules sa kalagitnaan ng laro para pigilan ng trial. May paghingi pa ng certification ng Senado na walang violation ang House sa one-year bar rule. May dagdag pa mula sa Cortes Suprema na dapat may hearing pa rin sa second mode ng impeachment. Kumbaga sa basketball, panayang tawag ng foul sa atin ng referee kahit wala namang physical contact. Kada free, free throw natin, palayo ng palayo ang free throw line at pahirap, at pahirap ng pahirap maka-shoot. Parang ang lakas ng kalaban sa mga referee sa larong ito. Hindi yata bilog ang bola. Masababang itanong pagkatapos nating lumaro ng patas, kung natalo ba talaga tayo o nadaya tayo? Pangalawa, malinaw na nagkamali po ang Cortes Suprema with all due respect to them ng sabihin na hindi pinagbutuhan sa plenary ang transmital ng impeachment complaint. A plenary session was actually conducted where members of the House voted to immediately endorse the fourth impeachment complaint and transmit it to the Senate. Mismong House Journal ang nagpatunay dito at hindi lamang isang news report na tangin pinagbatayan ng Supreme Court. Simple lang po ang tinuro sa atin, sa law school, sa rules of evidence, mas matimbang official government records kaysa sa news report. Ang unay tinuturing na authentic at primary documentary evidence ang pangalawa'y secondary source. So kung may conflict, 'yung primary document ang susundin natin. Let me stress the consequence. The highest court of the land, without even allowing the House to fully present its case through oral arguments and perhaps submission of memoranda, anchored a unanimous decision and second-hand views while brushing aside the official journal of a co-equal branch. Had the honorable justices bothered to take a look at the House Journal of February 5, 2025, which apparently it has not done, which it has done so on other occasions of transcendental importance, they would have seen that the House voted to transmit the articles of impeachment with overwhelming support, 250, 215 votes, and that the earlier complaints were archived only as a formality after the fourth complaint has already been elevated. Yet, the court's ruling citing a mere news report painted a false picture. But the House rushed a new complaint despite pending ones, a narrative that flatly contradicts reality. Patlo, hindi nga manghuhula ang mga House members para malaman na noong February 5, babaguhin at dadagdagan pala ng Supreme Court. Pagdating ng July 25, ang ibig sabihin ng initiation na naiba sa mga dating desisyon nito sa Francisco versus H O R at Gutierrez versus H O R. Hindi natin kayang mag-time travel para sabihin sa mga congressmen noong February 5 na kailangan nilang sundin ang mga magiging bagong interpretasyon ng Supreme Court sa salitang initiation. Halos kalahating taon bago pa man iton maimbento at ma-isulat noong July 25. The principle of prospectivity applies not only to original or amendatory statutes and administrative rulings and circulars, but also judicial decisions. When an old doctrine is overruled or, in the case of the Duterte case, substantially modified, the new doctrine should be applied prospectively and should not apply to those who relied on the old doctrine in good faith. Hindi lang po ako ang nagsabi niyan. Kung hindi ang Supreme Court sa Columbia Pictures versus Court of Appeals, nakaabuso ba tayo kung hilingin natin sa Cortes Suprema na sa pagkakataong ito na sundin rin sana nila ang sarili nilang desisyon sa doktrina ng prospectivity? Palagay ko hindi po naman. Pangapat, at ang pinakamahalaga sa lahat. Katulad po ng sinabi ng ating minority leader kahapon, nagkaroon ng judicial amendment to the Constitution. Ang pagamienda sa Constitution ay huling ginawa ng Cortes Suprema sa kaso ng Republic versus Sereno. Sa kasong ito, inalis sa puesto bilang Chief Justice si Maria Lourdes Sereno sa pamamagitan ng co-warranto, taliwas sa utos ng konstitusyon na ang mga miyembro ng Cortes Suprema ay pwede lamang tanggalin sa pamamagitan ng impeachment. Duterte versus H O R is the second amendment of the Constitution by the Supreme Court since the Serena case. Article 11, Section 3, Paragraph 4 of the Constitution does not contain additional requirements regarding the drafting of the complaint, the manner of its circulation, or the conduct of any hearing or presentation of evidence before filing. These details, I respectfully submit, are outside of constitutional parameters and are best left to the rules on impeachment promulgated by the House. If the Supreme Court's decision remains undisturbed, there will now be two new subsections under Article 11, Section 3, Subparagraph 4 of the 1987 Constitution as amended by the Supreme Court in Duterte. Aside from the requirement that it must be filed by one-third of the members of the House before transmitted to the Senate, the articles of impeachment must now be furnished first to the official being impeached in its draft form to give her the opportunity to respond. Thereafter, the articles of impeachment still in its draft form and the impeachable official's response should be furnished to all the members of the House for deliberating, for deliberation before voting on the same. These are now seemingly the new subsections of Article 11, Section 3, Paragraph, Subparagraph 4 of the 1987 Constitution as amended by the Court in Duterte, if not reversed. Unlike amendments properly made under Article 17 of the Constitution on Amendments and Revisions, these amendments made by the Supreme Court are not subject to a plebiscite. These two new subsections are also problematic, not only because they are unconstitutional amendments to Article 11, Section 3, Subparagraph 4, but they are also problematic in substance. A draft articles of impeachment without any signature of any House member or congressional official cannot be treated as an official document. It might not be any better than a mere scrap of paper. Now, why would an impeachable official respond to an unsigned draft? And by what power is she or he compelled to do so? When, for all intents and purposes, it is entirely possible that a single or that not a single congressman or congresswoman will even sign it? What is the legal status of the draft articles of impeachment at that point? Before it is even signed by a single House member? Is it an official scrap of paper? Will the Supreme Court now add another amendment requiring the House Secretary General or the Speaker of the House to attest to and verify the unsigned draft articles as an official document of the House? If the Speaker attests to it, does that lone signature amount to endorsement? Can any single House member sign and thereby make it official enough to trigger the impeachable official's obligation to respond? Have we not just come full circle to the first mode of impeachment, effectively repealing the second mode or the third mode in its entirety from the 1987 Constitution? And if the draft is later changed in plenary after the official filed a response, must he or she respond again and again for every new version? If not given the chance to respond to a modified second, third, or fourth draft whatever, would that not be another so-called violation of the right to due process? Mr. Speaker, the questions are endless. This is the danger with judicial amendments to the 1987 Constitution. At hindi po tayo nag-iisa sa mga obsebasyon ito. Former Comlet Chair Christian Monsoud, one of the framers of the 1987 Constitution noted that the court, quote, "imposed retroactively new requirements that were never part of past impeachment precedents," end of quote. "Such as a plenary hearing before referral to committee and giving the respondent a chance to be heard at the House even before we transmit the case to the Senate," as he put it. If there is a violation of due process, it is when one is required to comply with a rule that did not exist at a time of the act. Retired Chief Justice Reynato Puno, speaking for the Philippine Constitutional Association or Filconsa, voiced grave concern over this judicial intrusion. Filconsa warned that requiring the House to certify compliance with the one-year ban, a requirement found nowhere in the Constitution and proches on the House's sole prerogative under Article 11, Section 3. Quote, "To create such a requirement," according to CJ Puno, "to create such a requirement ex post facto undermines both the separation of powers and the rule of law," end of quote. Once the Senate has received the articles of impeachment in February 5, it has validly acquired jurisdiction, and that jurisdiction cannot be lost or suspended by mere procedural acts such as the lack of a House certification. Retired Senior Associate Justice Antonio Carpio also noted that the court relied on a media report instead of official records of the House. Indeed, ABS-CBN News itself has clarified that a news item the Supreme Court cited were misinterpreted, misinterpreted, and did not reflect the official House Journal of Proceedings. Retired Justice and 1986 Constitutional Commission Member Adolf Ascona said it best. Quote, "The Constitution does not say there has to be a hearing." The Supreme Court now says there has to be a hearing, that is rewriting the Constitution, not just the rules. The Supreme Court is saying the Constitution is unconstitutional, end of quote. Hindi po palpak ang camera, at lalo hindi ito sunud-sunuran sa ambisyon ng iilan. We will not allow our duty to hold a high official accountable for grave violations of law and public trust to be twisted by cheap analogies about undercooked rice. Kung merong hilaw dito, ito ang mga paliwanag ni VP Inday Sara sa mga isyung kinakaharap niya. Bakit ba takot na takot siyang harapin ang impeachment trial kung malinis ang kanyang consensual? Perhaps more than anyone, I know that an innocent can look their accusers in the eye and say that the evidence is false if not a trouble sham. Let me be equally clear, the House of Representatives, a co-equal branch of government, was fulfilling its duty in exercising its constituent powers that even the Supreme Court cannot just take away. Hindi pwedeng basta ipawalang bisan ng Cortes Suprema, ang kapangyarihang ipinagkalooob ng saligang batas sa camera, lalo na kung maling batayan ang ginamit nito. The separation of powers is like a finely tuned scale, each branch bearing its own weight so that the republic stands upright. When one branch acts in a way that shifts that weight, it must move with the precision of a surgeon, not the force of a sledgehammer. To do otherwise is to risk toppling the balance entirely, leaving our people to the government where one power overshadows the rest and the promise of checks and balances becomes nothing more than a faded inscription in a dusty law book. Long-established principles on judicial restraint and separation of powers have been cast aside. In Duterte, the Supreme Court painted in broad strokes, ignoring the boundaries of competence and authority it once acknowledged in Imbong versus Ochoa, GR Number 204819, April 8, 2014. I quote, medyo mahaba-haba po't itong quotation, but I find it very important. In many cases involving the determination of the constitutionality of the actions of the executive and the legislature, it is often sought that the court temper its exercise of judicial power and accord due respect to the wisdom of its co-equal branch on the basis of the principle of separation of powers. To be clear, the separation of powers is a fundamental principle in our system of government which obtains not through express provision but by actual division in our Constitution. Each department of the government has the exclusive cognizance of matters within its jurisdiction and is supreme within its own sphere. In its relationship with its co-equals, the judiciary recognizes the doctrine of separation of powers which imposes upon the court's proper restraint. Born of the nature of their functions and of their respect for the other branches of government is striking down the acts of the executive or the legislature as unconstitutional. Verily, the policy is a harmonious blend of courtesy and caution. It has long been observed, however, that in times of social disquietude or political instability, the great landmarks of the Constitution are apt to be forgotten or marred, if not entirely obliterated. In order to address this, the Constitution impresses upon the court to respect the acts performed by co-equal branch done within its sphere of competence and authority, but at the same time allows it to cross the line of separation but only at a very limited and specific point to determine whether the acts of the executive or the legislative branches are null because they were undertaken with grave abuse of discretion, end of quote. A harmonious blend of courtesy and caution. A harmonious blend of courtesy and caution. We respect the judiciary. As a lawyer, I respect the judiciary. But respect must be mutual. The court must also honor the legislature's exclusive domain over impeachment unless there is clear grave abuse of discretion or blatant violation of the Constitution which this House most certainly did not commit. Upholding the Constitution sometimes means checking a co-equal's overreach. In this case, it is our duty to call out the Supreme Court's encroachment on Congress's Records clearly show that impeachment was duly initiated in February 5, 2025, in full accordance with Article 11, Section 3, Subparagraph 4, and yet the Senate failed to do its duty to proceed with impeachment forthwith. The Senate could have convened as an impeachment court as early as February or March, but it did not. Some of us in the House grew concerned at this five-month delay, as justice delayed is justice denied. Still, the House prepared for trial, designating our House prosecution team and readying our evidence. Nevertheless, on June 10, in a twist, the Senate adopted a resolution to remand the Articles of Impeachment back to the House, asking the House to certify that a one-year bar rule had been observed effectively. The Senate was suspending the trial pending this certification. Alas, on July 25, without any oral arguments, the Supreme Court issued its decision nullifying the House's Articles of Impeachment and barred the Senate from proceeding, supposedly on the ground the impeachment was initiated more than once in a year and that the Vice President's due process rights were supposedly violated at the House level. Worse, even if the House of Representatives, through the Office of the Solicitor General, filed a motion for reconsideration, the Senate, in plenary session, voted 19-5 to archive the impeachment complaint against VP Duterte. This move was exceptionally swift, contrary to their extremely tardy action, their stalling when it came to their convening as an impeachment court. Aside from the House's motion for reconsideration, four other MRs were filed by movement intervenors. The first group of complainants, with the endorser, Akbayan Representative Persis Endania, is Ambayan and the Mabayan Block. And just yesterday, another group of intervenors, the third group of impeachment complainants, also made a plea to the court to reverse its July 25 decision. These MRs are not frivolous or sham. They raise strong and compelling arguments necessitating a serious review of the July The pending motions for reconsideration embody the Filipino people's concern for the integrity of the impeachment process and their call for the accountability of the Vice President. To ignore this legitimate pleas by archiving the Articles of Impeachment even before they're fully heard by the Supreme Court is being insensitive not only to the demands of the lawmakers, constituents, and sectors they represent, but to public opinion as well. The Senate has not even started the trial, but it moved with lightning speed to bury the complaint once the Supreme Court gave them an opening. The Senate dragged its feet on the actual impeachment trial but moved immediately when it came to archiving the complaint. Fourth with apparently was observed in the breach. If this is not a case of double standard, I don't know what it is. The irony is that following the decision of the Supreme Court in Duterte, archiving the Articles of Impeachment is tantamount to a dismissal. First three complaints, daw, when archived, were deemed or effectively terminated or dismissed. Some senators have said their preemptive vote was simply respect for the Supreme Court. But let us be honest, it is the House of Representatives' constitutional prerogative has been disrespected. The Constitution commands the Senate to proceed with impeachment forthwith, yet it took them nearly half a year to even consider convening as an impeachment court. But when the opportunity came to archive the complaint, suddenly forthwith was crystal clear to them. That burst of urgency after months of delay is telling. It is not unreasonable to suspect that this timing was no coincidence, that the Senate's low walk at the start bought time for the Vice President, for her lawyers, to reach the Supreme Court and for the court to run the full length of its decision-making ritual. This was not respect for another branch. It was a choreography of convenience, and the House was the one made to bow. Those are the facts, Mr. Speaker, Madam Speaker, and dear colleagues. If anything, it is the Senate whose unorthodox actions need defending before the bar of public opinion and when posterity will take a look at this chapter of our history. I have great respect for the Senate as an institution, having had the privilege of serving one of its former members. And I know there are senators, those who voted against archiving, for instance, who also see this outcome as a disservice to our people. But when the Senate chooses to abdicate a constitutional duty, we must pick up. We do not rise against the Senate, we rise for the Republic and the Filipino people. Just because the Senate dropped the case doesn't mean the issue disappears. The public is still waiting for answers. Deflection is not accountability, end of quote. The Senate President said that the Senate is not anyone's playground, and that is precisely why we expected it to rise above politics and uphold its duty to conduct a fair trial and not to preemptively dismiss by archiving the case. If this was truly about deference to the Supreme Court, the Senate could have simply suspended proceedings temporarily until the motions for reconsideration are resolved to give the Supreme Court and the House the due courtesy they deserve as co-equal branches. Instead, they rushed to archive or terminate the case. What we witnessed from the Senate is not the moving of heaven and earth to exact accountability and attain justice, but the moving of heaven and earth to render extraordinary protection Mr. Speaker, sa ginawa ng Senado at ng Cortes Suprema, malinaw na maipamala sa ating pananatili ng kapangyarihan ng mga Duterte. Pangalibitong hindi dapat maliitin. Hindi naman kasi imbento ang mga kasusyon natin, ang mga akusasyon natin laban kay VP Sara. Buong bayan ang nanood sa kanyang bantang ipapatay raw niya ang pangulo, ang unang ginang at ang speaker. Meron raw siyang kinausap na assassin. Siya pa mismo ang nagdiin, hindi ito biro. No joke, no joke. Mr. Speaker, it is really not a joke. Under ordinary circumstances, when a death threat is broadcast live on the internet to the highest and fourth highest officials of the land, it is doubtful that the offender would remain free the next day. So what makes this instance fall outside of ordinary circumstances? First, the offender is an impeachable official. Second, she is a Duterte. Because of these extraordinary circumstances, VP Sara not only evades charges at this point, she even has no less than institutions shielding her as if her death threat broadcast live on the internet were nothing more than a joke. I think that it is also the first time in Philippine history that someone challenged our top law enforcer, the PNP chief, to a fistfight. Of course, it had to be a Duterte. But like his sister, Baste Duterte is still free and unaccountable for what can be considered, to a certain extent, an assault on an officer of the law or at least for committing the Ang pangulong Marcos Jr. na mismo ang nagsabi, walang kinalaman na maakusasyon kay VP Sara sa naging desisyon ng Cortes Suprema. Puro tungkol sa proseso lang naman daw ang laman ng desisyon. Ayaw pa rin daw niyang makialam sa proseso dahil bilang isang impeachable official himself, maaring self-serving ang kanyang opinion sa proseso ng impeachment. With all due respect, the Supreme Court should take the cue from the President and reflect on the value of the President's statement that an impeachable official should be careful in his opinions about the impeachment process because they might be self-serving. Even if treated merely as an obiter dictum in the Duterte decision, this statement on what is an invalid cause for impeachment when this is not even the least mota of that case is a highly irregular, self-serving rider doctrine. It is completely unrelated to the case being disposed of by the court, who should have taken a page from the President's book on self-restraint. Having said that, we also wish that the President had refrained from thumbing down the impeachment or sending mixed signals. At least, he should have called for an all-out support on the need for accountability, even from impeachable officials. Of course, VP Sara can still be made accountable in a future impeachment complaint. But that is not the point I'm making here, Madam Speaker, dear colleagues. The point is, the impeachment process has now been made more difficult, but the court's decision in Duterte, if not nearly impossible. That is why Duterte versus H O R, if not reconsidered, is unacceptable. The checkpoints and roadblocks it has erected are simply insurmountable for House members to even dare endorsing one in the near future. Accountability has never been made more difficult to achieve in this country than now, and this is the reason why I am also against, basically, the prospective application of the decision in Duterte case. There is no alternative to overturning the rules and doctrines laid down in this decision. Duterte versus H O R and the lip service it paid to due process at the expense of accountability simply has no place in a democratic republic where the people should be able to hold to account every single public official, even the special class of impeachable ones. Indeed, this fight is not over. Our fight is far from over. The House of Representatives will not waver in its duty to fight for the Filipino people. Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleagues, today we may be a mix of majority and minority, administration and opposition, but on this issue, let us be one house, united for the Constitution. Regardless of our political affiliations or our stance on the Vice President, we must reject any attempt to diminish the House's exclusive power under our fundamental law. If we let this pass, we would be abdicating a sacred duty and weakening the very foundations of checks and balances. History is watching, the people are watching. Let this echo through the halls of Congress and into the hearts of our people. No one is above the Constitution, not the Vice President, not the President, not the legislature, not even the judiciary. The Constitution is the people's sovereign will, and today it is the fence, the House of Representatives, oof to stand, unbowed, unafraid, and united. Mr. Speaker, dear colleagues, thank you for your patience. Thank you.
Madam Speaker, I move to refer the speech of Honorable Lila de Lima to the Committee on Rules for Its Appropriate Action.
Any objection? Hearing none, the privileged speech of the Honorable Lila de Lima entitled "Supreme Court Ruling and Senate Decision in the Impeachment Case," a Vice President Sara Duterte is hereby referred to the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move to extend the privilege hour for another hour to allow the other members who registered from the Committee on Rules to avail of the privilege hour.
Any objection? Hearing none, the privilege hour is extended for another hour. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move to recognize the gentleman from First District, Masbate, the Honorable Representative Antonio Ko to avail of the privilege hour.
The Honorable Antonio Ko of the First District of Masbate is hereby recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, my dear colleague, ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon. A raised today in the matter of a personal collective privilege, a matter that affect the integrity of our infrastructure development and urgently needs for and urgently needs so that we can have a solution to this problem. Mr. Speaker, we have witnessed during this incident involving the collapse of several bridges in our countryside. Bridges from Magapi of Palit Batangas. Bridges from Magapi of Palit, Batangas, other bridges also from Batangas, two from Bohol, the Borja as well as Claret Bridge from Bohol, and one also from Pangasinan. And most recently, Mister Speaker, East Chabagan Santa Maria Bridge in Isabela. This is the most controversial bridge so far of entire country, Mister Speaker, Madam Speaker. A bridge amounting to 1.2 billion after it was turned over to the inducers for 26 days, it collapsed. So, in my own mathematical computations, I found out that this is the most expensive bridge, not only in the entire country but in the world. 1.2 billion divided by 26 days, more or less, we have 47 million. Mister Speaker, Madam Speaker, during my analysis and the study, I found out that this is the ultimate solutions of the problem to establish a Philippine bridge safety and regulatory authority to solve this problem once and for all. Because I know for the part that structural defect is not only a defect, but defect of our provisionary and a defect of accountability. Now to this day, no one held accountable. Madam Speaker, this is coupled by a board of directors who will be the policymaking body and an administrator will be the chief operating officers and to implement whatever the policy of the board. Madam Speaker, the qualifications of administrator should be an institutional engineer by professionals, ten years' experience in planning and design, and also constructions of bridges, Mister Speaker, Madam Speaker. So, a six years fixed term with no reappointment at it should be under the office of the president, Madam Speaker. So to strengthen this bill, this should be supported by a technical divisions like bridge engineer from planning and design divisions, bridge safety with forensic investigation division, digital monitoring and analytic system divisions. We have also an internal audit with risk management unit and other technical division, Madam Speaker. So, all of these things will be useless and this will be futile and inutile one without funding warrant, Madam Speaker. So, I would like to appeal to my colleague to appropriate funds intended for her support, Madam Speaker. So, and funding from other sources like 1% should be allocated from the total allocation of public works and highways for infrastructure. And the most important, Madam Speaker, is to the 10% bridge toll revenues from national bridge toll. Madam Speaker, this important and urgent needs to passage this bill, for the passage of this bill. We cannot wait or allow another bridge to collapse before we act. We should act now, Madam Speaker. Well, tomorrow may be too late. Thank you, Madam Speaker, and good day.
Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I'd like to recognize the minority leader, Representative Libanan, for his interpolation.
The minority leader, the Honorable Libanan is hereby recognized.
Good evening, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I ask the distinguished gentleman from Masbate, the province known as the rodeo capital of the Philippines, if he is ready to yield to some interpolation, Madam Speaker.
Very much willing, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, napakatimli po itong inumang privileged speech ang na ating sponsor. Dahil ang daming nangyaring nagbabagsakanan ng mga tulay sa Pilipinas. At marami po dito ay napakalumang mga tulay na. 'Yung iba, mga war reparations pa 'yan na bakal ng government of Japan. Kahit po 'yung bakal na ginamit sa San Juanico Bridge ay repairson na pa rin 'yan sa gira. Madam Speaker, pangalawa po ay napakahalaga dahil lamyo 'yung ugali ng mga Asians. Daming beses na ang sinasabi ang isang tulayo ay isang sasakyan. Kahit ang sasakyan, sinasabi ang load limit 15 tons. Pero sa totoo, inakargahan ng lampas ng 15 tons, 20 tons, umaabot pa ng 30 tons. Kahit po 'yung mga truck na ginagawa na kaya ko nagadvertise sa mga hapon, pero pag sinabi ng Isusu, Hino, 15 tons ang load limit, kahit kinargahan 'yung sasakyan ng 20 or 25 tons, hindi pa bumabagsak 'yung sakyan. Kasi praniper 'yun para sa Asian na nagbiya-biyahe. Kaya, Madam Speaker, napakahalaga po nito bago magbagsakan ang ating iba pang mga tulay. Under, I would like to ask the distinguished sponsor, Madam Speaker, that in proposing for the creation of the Philippine Bridge Safety and Regulatory Authority, is this measure borne out of a genuine necessity or merely a reaction to current controversies that have gained public attention?
Madam Speaker, as I've said, this is an urgent needs to address. Our tragic incident, the collapse of bridges for several bridges in entire countries have mentioned. Two from Batangas, one from Pangasinan, two from Bohol, and another one in Isabela, which is the most controversial bridge so far that I've mentioned. Madam Speaker, we should act now, a facet of this bill, or else if we continue to this tragedy that we will encounter, Madam Chair, this will be known to entire world that we have a country of appalling bridges, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. The second question is that, does this proposed bill creating the Philippine Bridge Safety and Regulatory Authority not duplicate the existing powers and functions of DPWH particularly in relation to bridge construction, inspection, and maintenance, Madam Speaker?
Madam Speaker, this is independent from public works and highways because we have our own regulatory functions as far as we have a quasi judicial power. Mister Speaker, there's no duplicating, duplications as far as their functions and duties because we have our own structural and a technical division who are in charge in constructions, planning, design, inspections, and up to maintenance, Madam Speaker.
Thank you for that clarification, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, may I further ask the distinguished sponsor? Does the PBSRA, as proposed in this bill, have the authority to impose sanctions on parties found liable for bridge-related violations, including design, contractor, and even DPW's personnel who may have been negligent in their duties?
Madam Speaker, this Philippine Bridge Safety and Regulatory Board can impose sanction and penalties, Mister Speaker, to those who violated by the contractor as well as the designer and in the process of implementations, if there will be a defect and damage, the contractor should repay at their own risk. And not only for that, Mister Speaker, under revised penalty, revised code, Mister Speaker, that is what we call Article 171 and 172, Mister Speaker, for government employees and officials. The penalty, Mister Speaker, is an outright dismissal from service and terminations of cancellations of eligibility and perpetuates of all benefits, Madam Speaker, and perpetual disqualifications of holding public office. But if found out that they have falsified the document, Madam Speaker, a penalty of six years and one day and maximum of 12 years imprisonment and a fine depend upon the gravity of the offense, Madam Speaker, and perpetual disqualifications of holding public office.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, may I further ask? How crucial is the creation of the Philippine Bridge Safety and Regulatory Authority to the ongoing and upcoming construction, rehabilitation, and repair of bridges nationwide? What specific gaps does this agency intend to fill that current government agencies cannot, Madam Speaker?
Madam Speaker, if this bill will be approved into law, Madam Speaker. And this is very important and crucial, as you have said. Considering that if this bill will be approved, we are now mandated solely to oversee structural integrity that there will be no construction of bridges in our country without proper planning, safety design, follow the construction methodology procedures, and at limited to regular inspections and adequate maintain-ups. That's all, Mister Speaker, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. This indeed a loadable bill, and I would like to ask, Mister Speaker, if there's already been consultation with the Department of Public Works and Highways regarding this direction that we'll be going into, Mister Speaker?
After this bill will be submitted to appropriate committees, Mister Speaker. There's now a need for consultations of public works and highways because not only public, limited to public works and highways, but also the Department of Transportation and Communication because this involve loading, maximum loading capacity. For the public works and highways, Mister Speaker, is that there must be a transition period of this. Transitions in the sense that there will be inventory of all bridges in our country as far as the situation's a condition if there's a need for retrofitting and there's a need for construction of bridges because it already exceed the 50 years lifespan of the bridges, Mister Speaker.
Thank you for that answer, Mister Speaker. Speaker, talagang napakakailangan nito, the sponsor just stated about retrofitting. You know, there are rehabilitations of bridges on retrofitting. Sila na lang ang nakakaalam kung papaano, hindi ini-explain sa atin kung kung anong upgrade ang ginagawa sa ating mga tulay. Nevertheless, Mister Speaker, I would like to ask, where will we get funding for this agency that the Honorable Gentleman sought to create?
Ah, Mister Speaker, that's a very good question, Mister Speaker. This is a question of funding warrant. That's why I would like to appeal to my colleague to appropriate funds intended for his force and other funding sources, Mister Speaker, that 1% from a total public works allocation for infrastructure should be allocated by this creation. And 10% from the bridge toll revenues under this existing laws, Mister Speaker.
And thank you, Mister Speaker. And lastly, Mister Speaker, how will this Philippine Bridge Safety and Regulatory Authority coordinate with our respective local government units in the area? Will discover or include LGU bridges? Or would this only be regarding DPWH constructed bridges? And how about those which were constructed by, for example, Department of Agarian Reform, Department of Agriculture? How will you coordinate?
As far as creation of this bridge authority, Mister Speaker, the coordinations of LGU is at most is very important in monitoring, especially if there will be a disaster. Second, Mister Speaker, that there is a need and independency of this bill so that there will be a proper coordination to Department of Transportation and Communication, coordinations from the public works and highways, and other agency, Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, napakaganda po ng privileged speech ng ating gentleman from the First District of Masbate. Kaya naman po ako po'y nakumbinsi na napakahalaga ng bill na ito. And if this bill is filed, I would be willing to be a co-author of this measure. Thank you, Mister Speaker. Thank you, distinguished sponsor.
Thank you, minority leaders. Thank you, Mister Speaker, and good day.
Thank you, Minority Leader Libanan and Congressman Po of Masbate. Majority Leader, please.
Mister Speaker, having no member of the house to interpolate, I move to refer the speech of Honorable Ko to the Committee on Rules for its appropriate action.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The motion is approved, the speech of a stated Congressman Ko of Masbate, as well as the interpolations and manifestations, referred to the Committee on Rules for its appropriate action. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I would like to recognize the guests of Rep. Robert Nazal of BH, Bago Henerasyon Partilis. These are the National Council for Solo Parents President Red Guzman, Lloyd Nickdau, Mary Ann Hermo, Rebecca Tolentino, Rowena Montoya, Mary Grace Tejano, Rosa Bote, Merlo Daisy Mesa, Clarissa Carmela Capule, Clarissa Baltasar, Janet Flores, Colleen Roban.
Thank you, Majority Leader. To the guests of BH Partilis and Assistant Minority Leader, Congressman Robert Nazal to the National Council. to the National Council for Solo Parents led by President Red Guzman. On behalf of Speaker Martin Romaldes, good afternoon and welcome to the House of Representatives. Mayong hapon, magandang hapon. Thank you. Majority Leader, please.
Mr. Speaker, I move to recognize the lady from the Third District of Bukidnon, the Honorable Audrey K. Zubiri, to avail of the privilege R.
Mayong hapon, ang inatauhan sa Bukidnon, sa Tresse Distrito. Congressman Audrey K. T. Zubiri, Bukidnon, you're recognized, ma'am. Please proceed.
Daghang salamat, Mr. Speaker. Ug mayong hapon sa inyo, ug mayong hapon sa tanan. Mr. Speaker, esteemed colleagues and to my fellow Filipinos, good afternoon. I rise today on a matter of both personal and collective privilege. I speak for the countless ordinary citizens whose lives are quietly being torn apart by online lending, a predatory system disguised as convenience. We live in a digital world where innovation promises progress. Yet, for millions of Filipinos, the very platforms created to offer financial relief have become instruments of torment. Lending is nothing new to us. We have long relied on it from the classic five-six system to pawning of valuables, borrowing from friends, family, and banks. Credit for many has been a lifeline, a way to survive. But with the advent of digital technology and social media, poverty, indebtedness, and financial distress have worsened. The widespread adoption of online lending platforms has indeed brought swift access to credit, especially for those underserved by traditional banking institutions. Online lending companies offer convenience, minimal requirements, quick approval, and a removal of collateral requirements compared to traditional banking institutions. According to a 2025 study, the number of new and unique users of online lending platforms surged by a staggering forty-three percent, reaching sixty-seven point eighty-four million Filipinos. Truly, online lending platforms have significantly changed the financial landscape in our country. But this facade of convenience and increase in financial inclusion comes at a higher cost. Many Filipinos, driven by desperation, vices, or urgent need for money, accept exorbitant interest rates offered by these online lending companies, trapping them in a relentless cycle of debt. Interest rates in online lending applications can go as high as one percent a day, even with the existing laws and regulations for loan interest rates. Meanwhile, the Banco Central ng Pilipinas indicated that approximately one in three Filipino households has outstanding debt. Aside from housing loans, most of these debts are sourced through non-bank financing institutions, including online lenders. A fintech report now warns that credit card debt in the Philippines has reached a critical risk level, giving us the worst debt-to-income ratio in Asia at four hundred twenty-five percent. To make things worse, borrowers are subjected to highly aggressive and utterly dehumanizing collection tactics. These abusive practices include relentless threatening calls and messages, public shaming on social media, unauthorized access to personal contacts, and even the audacious impersonation of law enforcement officers. Such actions not only violate the dignity of our citizens, but also brazenly contravene several Philippine laws. Our nation is not without legal framework to combat these abuses. Key statutes such as the Republic Act Number 11765 or the Financial Products and Services Consumer Protection Act expressly prohibits financial service providers from employing abusive collection practices against consumers. RA Number 3765, the Truth in Lending Act, mandates the full disclosure of essential loan terms and conditions, while RA 9474 or the Lending Company Regulation Act of 2007 allows lending companies to only charge reasonable interest rates and charges upon the debtor. RA 10173 or the Data Privacy Act stands as a shield to protect personal data from unauthorized processing and disclosure by lending companies. Moreover, the Securities and Exchange Commission issued memorandum circular Number 18, series of 2019, unequivocally banning abusive debt collection methods like threats, harassment, and public shaming, especially in the online lending context. Even the Banco Central ng Pilipinas has issued several circulars emphasizing fair collection practices for banks and financial institutions. In fact, the Supreme Court itself, in a 2024 decision, struck down interest rates as high as sixty percent per annum or five percent per month, reminding us that contractual autonomy is not absolute but must be balanced with laws, morals, good customs, public order, and public policy. Unfortunately, despite the existing laws and government regulations, the persistence and escalation of these issues cry out for streamlined, more coordinated measures. The surge in online lending post-pandemic has been tragically accompanied by a significant rise in complaints about abusive collection practices. The Presidential Anti-Organized Crime Commission, PAOK, recently revealed that the Philippine National Police have recorded one hundred fifty-six thousand complaints of online crimes per month, with most of these cases involving victims of harassment from online lending applications. The PAOK further disclosed that currently it is handling over fifteen thousand complaints against abusive online lending applications. The SEC itself has reported receiving over ten thousand complaints of unfair collection practices. In a sobering 2024 study found that while most online lending applications had positive user ratings, the critical themes of high interest rates, hidden charges, and aggressive collection practices were significantly more prevalent among unregistered online lending applications. This sweet temptation of having easy money leads to a cruel reality for ordinary Filipinos and one which may cost lives. In July 2025, a man from Valenzuela City tragically took his own life, partly due to prolonged harassment and psychologically of psychological abuse from online lending collectors. And sad to say, this is not the only story of suicide that we have heard in connection with online loaning apps. In another heartbreaking case, a twenty-six-year-old civil servant suffered severe depression after being publicly shamed about her debts. Furthermore, this issue has escalated beyond financial crime and is now a matter of national security. The recent raids conducted by the National Bureau of Investigation and the PAOK have uncovered large-scale operations run by foreign nationals. And these are not isolated incidents. Authorities have expressed concerns that these are organized transnational criminal syndicates, some possibly former Pogo operators who have shifted to this new form of exploitation. They are illegally harvesting the sensitive personal data of millions of Filipinos, our contact lists, our private photos, our identification details. When foreign elements can operate with impunity on our soil, exploiting our people and our laws, it is a direct challenge to our national sovereignty. Indebtedness in online lending companies is further intensified by the proliferation of online gambling activities in the country. While they may appear separate, desperation, addiction, and pressure from online gambling fuels the urge for more Filipinos to resort to easy money, online lending applications. This is further aggravated by the aggressive promotion of online lending companies of easy loans and quick cash through targeted ads in different online platforms, online gambling games, and even in text messages, promising instant relief to the financially vulnerable. The story is tragically simple and all too common. An individual drawn into the world of online gambling quickly loses their savings. Desperate to recoup their losses or simply to continue playing, they turn to online lending applications for a quick infusion of cash. The high-interest loans are almost impossible to repay, and when the borrower inevitably defaults, the harassment begins. We have heard horrific stories of public shaming, threats, intimidation, leading to severe mental health issues and, as I mentioned earlier, in some tragic cases, even suicide. Mr. Speaker, this is not just about individual debt crisis. We are confronting a public financial threat, a pervasive digital privacy violation, and a systemic violation of the poor. Maawa po tayo sa ating mga kababayan. Lulong na nga sa sugal, lubog pa sa utang. This is a battle cry for the very soul of our nation, a fight to protect the most vulnerable among us from those who profit from their desperation. Because if the vulnerable cannot protect themselves, then the government must step in. And if we cannot protect our people from abuse and exploitation, then we have no business calling ourselves public servants. Maraming Pilipino po ang palihim na nagdurusa. Most are ashamed to share their torment with their families. Others are pushed to the edge by the relentless harassment and highly aggressive collection tactics employed by these online lending companies. Therefore, Mr. Speaker, I implore this August chamber to remember our sacred oath to protect our people, not only from economic hardship but from the insidious exploitation that disguises itself as assistance. We must ensure that our laws are not just words on paper but vigorously enforced. It is imperative for us to stop this cycle of abuse, stop online lending abusive practices, ban online gambling, and protect our people from exploitation before we lose more lives to a system that shamelessly profits from their suffering. The time for decisive action is now. Let us rise to this challenge and deliver justice to Filipinos. Daghang salamat, ugsa makausa, mayong hapon sa tanan.
Daghang mayong salamat, ug mayong hapon sa ikatulong distrito na Congresswoman, Congressista Audrey K. T. Zubiri.
Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker.
Congressman Abante?
May I allow you to just ask some further questions to our gentle lady here?
Congressman Zubiri?
To me, Mr. Speaker, this is a revelation, actually.
You wish to interpolate, sir?
Yes, please. I welcome the questions from our good gentleman.
Salamat. Please proceed.
Do we have specifically a law that concerns the online lending? We don't have any?
I'm sorry, sir. I didn't hear you so well.
Do we have a law specifically on the online gambling, online lending?
Online lending, not yet, sir, because right now our laws are still, have not quite caught up with our technology. For example, our laws that are concerning gambling, that are concerning the lending are still our lending regulation, company regulation act of 2007. And you know, between 2007 and 2025, the rise in technological advancements has just outdated it. And so that is what we have. We have other laws as well such as the Republic Act of Number 11765, Production, Financial Products and Services, and 3765, Truth in Lending Act. But again, as I mentioned, many of these laws were created more than ten to twenty years ago, and so they are no longer able to address the concerns of online lending.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, we have a lot of vintage laws that ought to be changed, actually. But are you now preparing some bills concerning that?
Yes, Congressman, actually. Right now, tomorrow, we have scheduled briefings with some sectors that are kind of part of the online lending, the people who are concerned, and we hope to get enough information from them so that we can craft a credible law that will be able to address the gaps in our current online lending act. And hopefully, by next week, we will be able to file our new bill on online and regulation of online lending.
Very good. I would like to be a part of that as co-author.
Thank you very much, sir. It would be my pleasure and honor to have you join us.
Yeah, Mr. Speaker, also, I would like to ask the Madam Gentle Lady here. Do you think that there is a connection between the online gambling and the online lending?
I personally, Congressman, I fervently believe that there is. If we look at the, right now, we do not have much data supporting, like, we don't have much data. But if we look at what data we have, we will see that the online gambling revenues and the increase beginning from the years of 2023 to 2025 is quite in line with the surge in the new and unique users of online lending apps. You will see na parang nagsabay po. Kung naka-grab po siya, makikita natin na halos sabay ang kanilang pag-surge. And it really makes you, it really suggests that there must be a connection between these two, especially since in many online gambling apps, there is also a quick link that leads to online lending apps. So it's very easy for people to just click that and get the money that they need.
Um, Mr. Speaker, kung wala tayo talagang specifically na bata sa online lending, ibig sabihin lahat ng online lending ngayon idigal, diba?
Meron po tayong, what's happening po is yung ating sa SEC, no? Meron silang mga rules na kailangan makakuha po sila ng certificate of authority to operate. And once they have that certificate of authority to operate, meron din po silang secondary document na kailangan makuha, which is the online lending application registration. So at the moment, ang SEC po nakapagbigay na po ng over two thousand registered financial and lending companies. Pero out of the two thousand three hundred po, only one hundred eight lending companies have reported their online lending platforms, which I find hard to believe that there are only one hundred eight online lending applications. So those are just the ones that are registered. And of course, we are aware that there are also those which are not registered.
Yeah, Mr. Speaker, Madam Gentle Lady, there are how many lending companies that are legal in this country?
Currently, we have, as of January 2025, there are over two thousand registered financial and lending companies. But the regular lending does not cover the online lending expressly.
But not necessarily that they should be involved in online lending.
Yes, it should be covered, sir. Yes, Congressman.
Uh, therefore, Mr. Speaker, Madam Gentle Lady, this online lending, walang pagkakai ba ito eh? The online gambling then, as far as harassing the four people are concerned, diba? As far as yung mga mahihirap ay nagiging biktima ng online lending na ito, tulad na sila ay biktima din ng online gambling. Am I right?
Tutu po yun, Your Honor. Kasi parang nag-iba lang yung pangalan, nag-iba lang yung dating niya na yung isa kunwari for entertainment, habang ito naman ay kunwari pang assistance, pero ang punot dulo nito ay pinahihirapan, nahihirapan pa rin ang ating mga taong bayan.
Pero mga nagsasabi, because I filed the bill actually on online gambling, that there ought to be a total ban to it. Ngayon, may mga nagsasabi na if you have a total ban on online gambling, eh lalakasan loob ng mga illegal ng mga operators, they would go underground. Ngayon, pag ginawa nating idigal ang online lending, would you think that they will also go underground and they will also operate illegally? Like, for example, like wetting or?
Well, with regards firstly to our banning of online gambling, I, first of all, I would like to manifest my support. I actually filed one also very similar, calling for the online, the complete ban. And with regards to yung pagbabapo niya na magiging underground, no? Hindi po natin maiiwasan na siyempre, pag binan natin ang ating online gambling, meron at merong mga pasaway na maga-underground niyan. But number one, I firmly believe that what we, we as lawmakers have a responsibility have a responsibility to make sure that online gambling does not have a safe harbor in our country. And by keeping it as legal and regulated only, we are providing a safe harbor. We're just giving it a chance to slide under us, under the veneer of regulated. So hindi dapat, huwag po tayong matakot na maging bumabasa siya as illegal. Dahil what we have to do is we have to send a strong message that there is no room in our country for online gambling. And once it becomes illegal, all illegal, then at least our law enforcers, our agencies, can now put all their energy into cracking down on these illegal companies rather than trying to regulate and keep up with the legal ones. So that is first. Ngayon naman po, with regards to our online lending apps, um, sa ngayon po, we are still studying if we can actually make it completely banned because it appears that due to our constitutional laws, no? And of course, to the ano, there really is no way that we can ban lending in our country. And so what we are hoping to do is that we can at least put much stronger safeguards. At the moment, kasi we have been studying it, and it appears that we don't have enough guardrails. For example, yung ating mga lending licenses, kailangan 1 million lang ang nasa banko, o kaya para sa financing license, kailangan 10 million lang ang nasa banko. Parang we are encouraging anyone, any mom and pop to put up this, and talagang madaling magkaroon ng mga fly-by-night na lending company. So kailangan talaga, our government agencies have to step up and really regulate this and put the proper guardrails in place. Instead of 1 to 10 million pesos, siguro dapat nasa 100 million, 300 million pesos. I mean, malaking negosyo 'to. Hindi naman pwedeng fly, 1 to 5 million lang ang kapital ng ating mga lenders.
Ibig sabihin, Mr. Speaker, yung sa online lending, eh, merong, merong himihiram o kumuutang na mga million na?
Um, sa ngayon po, I do not think that they cater to the two people who need millions of pesos. But we are, based on our research, we have come across the fact that online lenders are actually disbursing, between, um, some online lenders are actually disbursing up to billions of pesos per month.
You made mention, Mr. Speaker, that you, kanina, na mention mo din na this online lending are owned by foreign, uh, ano?
There have been some po. In fact, there were some reports of the NBI who were able to do some raids. And upon raiding their, yung mga nakikita natin, yung mga na-raid nila, ito po. Last June 2025, the Bureau of Immigration and the National Bureau of Investigation arrested nine foreign nationals involved in an online loan fraud scheme.
In the Philippines, Madam Speaker?
Yes, Your Honor, in the Philippines. And in July 2025, 168 employees were arrested by authorities during a raid in the office of an online lending application in Ortigas. And this lending firm is owned by a Chinese national, according to PAOK Executive Director Gilbert Cruz.
Do they have affiliates that are local businessmen here in the Philippines?
I would imagine, in order for them to be able to register and to be able to get the necessary documents from our agencies, they must have a local Filipino counterpart fronting for them.
Therefore, kung karamihan ng online lending na ito, ang nagmamay-ari ay foreign entities, hindi nagbabayad ng tamang buwisto, or actually, they're not paying any tax at all?
Nakot, siguro, lalaman natin sa BIR. Maganda siguro, mapatawag natin ang ating mga kaibigan doon.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, uh, I think this would be one of the investigations that Quadcom 2.0 should also consider investigating, uh, Mr. Speaker. And with that also, maraming maraming salamat po, Madam Gentle Lady, for this. I also would like to say, Mr. Speaker, August 12 po ngayon, I just would like to recognize, uh, yung Quadcom ng 19 Congress. Nagsimula po ito ng August 12. So I would like to just recognize and honor our Chairman Ace Barber, who is no longer with us, Dan Fernandez, and Karapatwano, and of course, Romeo Acop, no? For a job well done. Kaya ngayon po, August 12, 2025, I would like to say na ito po yung anniversary, actually, ng Quadcom ng 19 Congress. And we shall continue and finish this, including na po yung online lending na sinasabi ng ating Congressmen. Maraming maraming salamat po, Mr. Speaker. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Maraming maraming salamat, Congresswoman Zubiri, and of course, Congressman Abante. And thank you for reminding the Chair and the Plenary of the one-year anniversary of the Quadcom. Well done, sir. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, prior to any other motion, the Majority Leader would like to remind our colleagues that if ever they do intend to signify their, I mean, intend to interpolate, to please inform the Majority Leader because we have a list that we have and other members have already signified their intent to interpolate. And also to remind the speakers, availing of the privilege hour, to either when replying or questioning to address the speaker. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that reminder, Majority Leader. We still have 11 registrants for the privilege hour.
Mr. Speaker?
Reminder, one moment. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to recognize the gentleman from the First District of Northern Samar, the Honorable Nico Raoul Daza, to avail for his interpolation.
The gentleman of Samar, Representative Nico Raoul Daza is recognized, sir. Please proceed.
Uh, thank you, Majority Leader. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. If I may, may I ask the distinguished Madam of Bukit Non, the Honorable Audrey Zubiri, a few clarificatory questions?
I welcome the questions of the honorable gentleman.
Thank you. Mr. Speaker, to play devil's advocate, millions of people are availing of these online loans and being helped with their everyday lives. Is it worth going after these apps when they are helping so many? And really, shouldn't it be the borrower's responsibility to read the loan terms?
Absolutely. I completely, I believe that we should definitely go after these online lending apps. Uh, this is far more complex than an ordinary five-six situation gone wrong. We are dealing with multiple violations of various republic acts, such as the data privacy violations under RA 10173, collection abuse and harassment under RA 11765, predatory interest rates under RA 9474, as well as misleading false terms in transactions, which we find in violation of RA 3765. And so I dare say, apart from these violations to our Republic Act, no? As I mentioned, it is also now a threat to our national security as it has come to light that many of these operating lenders, online lending apps, are actually owned by foreign nationals. And so we must definitely go after them before it's too late. And with regards to the responsibility of our borrowers, I do, of course, yes, the borrower's responsibility is to read the contract. But we have to understand that these contracts are usually presented as very long voluminous documents, written usually in English with a lot of legal jargon. And while this practice complies with the legal requirements of our laws, it does not address the realities of our situation, which is the fact that many of our borrowers actually come from very vulnerable sectors. And so more often than not, they are not even able to fully comprehend these long contracts, that they are simply clicking "I agree with" at the end. Because also usually there is a big case of financial illiteracy as well. And so they are making uninformed decisions, almost as if like under duress. And, you know, in times like this, when lenders are also using deception and coercion, you know, I think it's time for the burden to shift not from our borrowers, but to our agencies and to our government to make sure that our borrowers are protected.
On this note, Mr. Speaker, a few more clarificatory questions for the distinguished Madam of Bukit Non. May I ask, what are the sample interest rates imposed by these online lending apps? And how many of these are actually registered with the SEC?
I'm sorry, did you ask about interest rates?
Yes.
Yes, interest rates. Uh, our interest rates, okay. So I have a few samples. As I mentioned earlier, the most extreme we have heard is interest rates of about 1% per day. But we have from four SEC-registered online lending apps, such as Money Cat, it is 11.9% per month. Tala Loan is 0.5% per day. One Hand is 9 to 12% per month. And ACOM is 4.98% per month. And so when you look at 0.5%, it sounds, it sounds very easy to deal with. But when you put that together on an annual basis, you're looking at approximately 182% per annum.
Okay, and then, Mr. Speaker, how many of these online lending companies are registered with the SEC?
Um, we have about 2,300 registered lenders. But of those lenders, only 108 have registered their online activities.
Mr. Speaker, so I ask, what does the distinguished Congresswoman propose about these online lending apps?
Well, first of all, I propose that we have a legislative inquiry to identify the possible gaps in our existing laws. As we mentioned earlier, many of the laws that we have, which are in connection with loans and lending, have come from decades past. And now with the advent of these new technologies, we need to update them, we need to keep up to date, and we need to make sure that we are able to face the demands of the current situation. Aside from this, I believe that it's time to strengthen as well the requirements of our agencies. It's time to ask for, number one, to increase their capitalization, uh, more due diligence. They have to head count the Filipino workers, check Filipino offices. There was an instance where there was a raid done, and the office that was registered was in a hotel located on Rojas Boulevard. But when our NBI went to that said hotel, obviously, the lobby, the lobby told them that there was no such office operating in that hotel. And so I am wondering how that this company was able to get a license. And of course, we must test the apps to make sure it's even working. Um, there are stories that say that some online lending applications are able to get their licenses without even being able to show the app yet. Uh, we also have to take into consideration that nowadays, there are also stories that some of these apps are actually malware, meaning they are downloaded by our borrowers, thinking that this will help them get the assistance they need, not knowing that aside from giving them the assistance they need, these malware are actually scraping their phones and taking their personal data. And that is how some of them are able to get the phone numbers, email addresses, or even passwords of these borrowers. And of course, I would also like to, of course, enhance, update some of our laws. Uh, I will not go into each and every one, as it's quite long, and I think that's more for committee. But I believe our laws are, it's ripe for an update when it comes to online lending.
Okay, thank you, uh, Honorable Representative Zubiri. And Mr. Speaker, I would like to manifest my full support and gratitude to the distinguished Madam of Bukit Non, Representative Audrey Zubiri, for shedding light on the predatory and exploitative practices in the online lending industry. I think the Honorable Zubiri said it best. Ang ating mga kababayan ay lubog na sa sugal, lubog pa sa utang. It is my hope that this August Chamber refers this issue or concern to the appropriate committee. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Honor, and thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Daghang salamat, uh, daghang salamat, Congressman Daza, and of course, Congresswoman Zubiri. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to recognize the gentleman from the First District of Bukit Non, the Honorable Jose Manuel Alba, for his interpolation.
Congressperson Manuel Alba of the province of Bukit Non? Where is, uh, Majority Leader?
Since he's not available, seeing there are no more interpolators, Mr. Speaker, I move to refer the speech of the Honorable Audrey K. Zubiri to the Rules Committee for its appropriate actions.
Is there no objection? Is there any objection? The Chair? Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved, the speech of Honorable Zubiri as well as interpolation, or if there were manifestation, is referred to the Committee on Rules for its appropriate action. Majority Leader, please, thank you. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move to recognize the lady from the First District of Sorsogon, the Honorable Marie Bernadette Escudero, to avail of the privilege hour.
Representative Marie Bernadette G. Escudero from the First District of Sorsogon, you're recognized, ma'am. Please proceed.
Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleagues of this August Chamber, ladies and gentlemen, I rise today to speak about a challenge that will shape the future of Philippine education, the rise of artificial intelligence, or AI, in our classrooms. AI is no longer a science fiction. It is here, evolving rapidly, already writing term papers, solving equations, summarizing books, and even generating original ideas and insights for our students, all in a matter of seconds. Dear colleagues, it has already entered the classrooms, not through the gates of our schools, but through the fingertips of our learners, through their laptops and smartphones. And we must respond with a firm sense of direction on how we should manage it. If a student copies AI-generated text without disclosure, is that plagiarism? If a student uses AI only to enhance their school output, similar to a spelling grammar checker, is that academic misconduct? Mr. Speaker, plagiarism has long been regarded as a serious academic offense, and so we punish it. But what if the source isn't a person, but an algorithm? Our laws and school policies have no clear answers yet. Today, both students and teachers navigate this new reality without much guidance, risking confusion and academic dishonesty on a national scale. Some schools may have already drafted the rules, but we still lack a comprehensive and national framework to address it and to protect academic integrity. In other words, our academists left to figure this out on their own. A recent study provides scientific evidence on the impact of AI on the process of cognition from the Massachusetts Institute of Technology Media Lab. It revealed that frequent reliance on AI tools like ChatGPT can impair critical thinking, especially among younger users. In this experiment, results showed that participants who frequently used AI while writing essays had the lowest brain activity in EEG scans. Meanwhile, those who wrote unaided demonstrated the highest cognitive engagement and best results. This is alarming, especially when we consider the state of our own education system. According to the Philippine Statistics Authority, 5.58 million Filipinos aged 10 to 64 are basically illiterate, basically illiterate, but literate, but not functionally literate because of lack of comprehension skill. Ladies and gentlemen, unregulated AI use risks deepening our learning crisis. A machine must never replace a child's mind. Ang AI ay dapat gamitin para tumulong mag-isip, hindi para iwasan ang pag-iisip. Our future policies must protect the balance of embracing innovation and safeguarding the natural development of human intelligence and critical thinking. This is why I respectfully urge this chamber to support the crafting of a national policy on responsible AI use in education. This must include clear rules on what counts as academic misconduct when AI is involved, disclosure protocols requiring students to cite or acknowledge AI assistance, AI literacy training for teachers, students, and school administrators, safeguards to use AI supports, not replaces human learning and critical thinking, and redesigned assessments that value originality and critical thinking over machine-generated answers. We can draw lessons from UNESCO's 2023 Guidance on Generative AI in Education and learn from countries like Singapore and South Korea that are balancing AI innovation with ethical safeguards in education. Mr. Speaker, let us teach our youth not just how to use AI, but how to critically, to think critically alongside it. We must preserve academic integrity even as we embrace technological advancement. Mr. Speaker, esteemed colleagues, I close with a final reminder. Education is not just about information, it is about formation. Let us shape a generation that is tech-savvy, yet values-driven, innovative, yet deeply human. But because in the age of AI, it is not the machines that should define our future, but the strength of the human mind. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, I move to recognize the gentleman from the Lone District of City of Pasig, the Honorable Roman T. Romulo, for his interpolation.
Congressman Roman, uh, the gentle person from the province of Sorsugon, uh, for interpolation.
Yes, Mrs. Speaker.
Proceed, Congressman Roman.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, to the lady from the First District of Sorsugon. Una una congratulations that you, that finally someone spoke about AI in the plenary. Sa totoo, Mr. Speaker, lady from the First District of Sorsugon.
Excuse me, Mr. Speaker, um, before we proceed, I'd like to extend the, uh, privilege R for another hour.
Is that a motion?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion to extend the privilege R. Any objection? No objection. The privilege R is now extended to another hour. Thank you, Majority Leader. Please proceed, Congressman. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, Majority Leader. Again, uh, to the lady from the First District of Sorsugon, congratulations for speaking about AI in the plenary. I think it is about time that we have a honest-to-goodness discussion on AI. Lady from Sorsugon, could you please define for us, what do we mean by artificial intelligence? What, what, what is the scope of AI?
Uh, Mr. Chair, um, as of now po kasi, um, personally po, um, all of us here, I am sure, are all using AI. Uh, even WhatsApp, they have chat, they have Meta AI, and, um, um, lahat po basically available on the internet. Sabi ko nga, nung panahon natin, pag nagre-research tayo, we have to, um, go to the library and use the encyclopedia. Pero ngayon, with all the innovations in technology, it's, um, as easy as, um, it's all in your fingertips. So if you have a smartphone, if you have a laptop, um, everything is accessible. Lahat ng information available on the worldwide web, makikita na natin if you have a smartphone or a laptop. So, um, sa ngayon, mga estudyante natin, ginagamit na rin 'yan for research and for everything that they need for the classroom. So, um, maswerte sila na available na 'yan. Pero at the same time, um, dapat nandito tayo para i-safeguard din dahil may mga risks din na involve sa masyadong paggamit ng AI.
Yes, in other words, tama po kayo, ano? Uh, lady from First District of Sorsugon, in other words, 'yung AI, it really feeds on what it also, what, what, what it reads in the, in the computers, what is there in the worldwide web. Yun rin namang po 'yung alam niyang knowledge, hindi ba? It does not create its own knowledge. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, and I, you also mentioned earlier, uh, Mr. Speaker, that there is an MIT study with respect to the use of ChatGPT. For clarity and for everyone to hear again, could you please reiterate what the results of that preliminary study said about the use of AI for, uh, students or learners?
Um, Mr. Chair, so according to the MIT Media Lab, it revealed that frequent reliance on AI tools like ChatGPT can impair critical thinking, especially among the youngest, younger users.
So, if I am to understand you correctly, um, Mr. Speaker, what you are telling us is that, in fact, there is already a study, and this is the first study, and it was done by MIT, which says that if we rely heavily on AI or ChatGPT, then it's, it stunts the growth in critical thinking of learners.
Uh, yes, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, and we all know, you also mentioned it earlier, the problem in the Philippines is even before critical thinking. The primary problem we have, as you pointed out earlier, was the PSA result, which said that we have many, uh, many learners who are functionally illiterate. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
In fact, you also mentioned a certain number earlier of functionally literate based on the PSA test or survey. You also mentioned a, a number already earlier. What was this number again?
Um, according to the PSA, five point fifty-eight million Filipinos aged ten to sixty-four are basically literate, but not functionally literate because of lack of comprehension skill.
So when we say not functionally literate, it means that they cannot comprehend what they are reading. They can read, but they cannot comprehend what they read. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
So, without comprehension, how can we go to the use of AI?
Um, right now, Mr. Speaker, um, the DEPED already has a DEPED Order Number Thirteen, uh, twenty twenty-five, series of twenty twenty-five, uh, which establishes the Education Center for AI Research, or ECR, which shall primarily operate for the agency and collaborate with other national and local government agencies with a primary objective of capacitating the educational institutions towards innovations through the use of AI tools. So, um, actually, last July seven, Secretary, the DEPED Secretary Angara also announced that DEPED is set to revise the national curriculum to already include training on artificial intelligence use.
Yes, but again, it is all in the planning stage, if that is, if that is, if my understanding is correct. In fact, the President himself has ordered the executive agencies to form a cluster to be able to create a roadmap for AI. And, uh, we understand that this move was done precisely because even the President recognized that we must go towards AI in the future. But before we get to that stage of AI, there are initial steps that we must fix first. Is that a common understanding?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, but let me also add, uh, for, for the benefit of our members, in addition to the numbers given earlier by the, uh, lady from the First District of Sorsugon, about the five, seven million who are functionally literate. This year, June twenty twenty-five, the Department of Education, uh, assessed grade-one students, about nine, grade one, two, and three students. About ninety-eight percent of the students were assessed. That's about five point two million students. And of the five point two million, uh, that were assessed beginning of this school year, four point five million of the five point two were not grade level in their, in their reading skills. So I think you, the President, the Executive Department, are correct that at this point in time, there are things that we must fix, like reading comprehension, functional literacy, before we fully dive into AI. So for that, uh, Mr. Speaker, I could once again congratulate the lady from the First District of Sorsugon. Hopefully, AI becomes a good tool for, uh, quality education in this country. But I agree with you, we must take baby steps towards that direction. We must be selective in its application for now, one size will not fit all. Again, congratulations. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, um, Mr. Speaker, and thank you to our Chairman of Basic Education, uh, at our, um, Representative Roman Romulo.
Malamang salamat, uh, Congress Representative Escudero and Roman. Majority Leader.
Seeing there are no more interpolators, Mr. Speaker, I move to refer the speech of Honorable Marie Bernadette G. Escudero to the Committee on the, on Rules for its Appropriate Action.
Is there no objection? Any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved, the speech of Honorable Escud, Escudero, as well as interpolations, manifestations, is referred to the Committee on Rules for its appropriate, appropriate action. Uh, Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to recognize the lady from Kabataan Partilis, the Honorable Renee Luis M. Coe, to avail of the privilege R.
Representative Renee Luis M. Coe of Partilis Kabataan. You have the floor, ma'am. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleagues, I stand before this August chamber as we commemorate International and National Youth Day today, on August twelfth. The observance of International Youth Day was first done on August twelfth, two thousand, after being adopted by the World Conference of Ministers Responsible for Youth in nineteen ninety-eight, and then officially endorsed by the United Nations General Assembly the next year to raise awareness on issues of the youth and recognizing their potential in building a better world. The celebration of Youth Day in the Philippines was adopted into domestic law through Republic Act Number nineteen eleven nine thirteen, or the National Youth Day Act, of which Kabataan Partilis takes pride in being a principal author. Recognizing the vital youth, the vital role of the youth in nation-building as provided in Article Two, Section Thirteen of the Constitution, RA eleven nine thirteen enjoins the National Youth Commission, sangunyang kabataan, as well as schools, colleges, universities, and education agencies, to hold discussions or forums on career paths, sustainable development, environment protection preservation, gender equality, mental health, and others, or launch activities such as leadership training, youth empowerment, workshops, basic masses integration, and community immersion activities in partnership with local and international youth organizations. Aside from this policy, our history deeply honors the ability of youth to create a just future. In fact, prior to the adoption of the International Youth Day, the Philippines was one of the earliest countries to formally celebrate a youth day. Starting nineteen forty-eight, we have celebrated Filipino Youth Day every June nineteenth, the birthday of Jose Rizal, in, in honor of his exemplary contributions to the Philippine Independence Movement and against the continuous rule of imperial Spain, all the while being a member of the youth. Nevertheless, my, my esteemed colleagues, there is one earlier instance of celebrating youth power. In nineteen twenty, the first ever Youth Day in the world was commemorated on May fourth, in honor of the May Fourth Movement of nineteen nineteen, when thousands of Chinese youth and students came together and protested against imperialist control over different regions in their country. After first commemorating the movement in nineteen twenty, they officially recognized its commemoration in nineteen thirty-nine and have since commemorated May fourth as their Youth Day annually. Mr. Speaker, this means that the earliest commemoration of youth empowerment goes to the revolutionary spirit of united students and youth and their collective struggle to change society. Similarly, in South Africa, their Youth Day is on the sixteenth of June to honor the suweto uprising of nineteen seventy-six, where hundreds of youth mobilized against the imposition of an oppressive and colonial language policy in schools. These demonstrations later turned into protests against police brutality, state repression, and apartheid. Mr. Speaker, the historical roots of youth empowerment are indisputable. In times of political and economic adversity, the youth take up the challenge to collectively rise up and resist anti-people policies, abuse, brutality, repression, and state terrorism. It is therefore the darkest of ironies that as we observe the International Youth Day today, rather than supporting youth empowerment, the Marcos Junior Administration and governments across the world are actively sabotaging the youth and destroying youth movements, robbing us of our capabilities to take control of our own future. In our schools, Mr. Speaker, our youth and students are driven away from our right to education. Despite the international recognition of education being a right, the thousands of pesos required to continue one's studies per academic year bar students from pushing through. The lack of funding for support services in universities is creating a crisis of inaccessibility. Out of ten Filipino students who enter grade one, only one will graduate college. We successfully passed Republic Act Number ten nine three one, which makes tuition in public universities free, and Kabataan Partilis once again takes pride in being its principal author. Despite this, the dropout rate is four out of ten. Many cite the increasing tuition and other school fees and living expenses as reasons for leaving educational institutions. Even worse, inside our schools, we are taught not to think, not to think critically in order to become problem solvers. Instead, we are taught simply to conform, so we just become rule followers of the system. Rather than strengthening appreciation for collective action, which is how historically youth have empowered themselves to change rules and make society more just and equal, we are forced to compete against each other, to be less concerned with the plights of others to prioritize survival. When we do extend ourselves for the sake of others, for the championing of social causes, we are punished. A case in point is that of Marcos Baltazar, Chairperson of Kabataan Partilisan Jose Del Monte. Last month, Marcos was not allowed to re-enroll at the City College of SJDM because he participated in a mobilization he did not even organize to join his LGBTQIA+ friends and allies to protest the revocation of a previous victory regarding the college's dress code policy that formerly allowed trans youth to wear gender-affirming clothing. For his participation, he was condemned to punishment without any adherence to procedural and substantial due process requirements that should have been afforded to him as per law and the Constitution, despite the Supreme Court ruling in Non versus Danis II, in which it said that the student does not shed their constitutionally protected rights at the school gate. Various rights and freedoms of students, such as the right to assembly and academic freedom, are eroded by overbroad waivers and agreements and by intimidation tactics of school and local officials. This is only one of the myriad of reports that this representation often receives regarding youth and student repression. And this pattern of silencing dissent also extends beyond the confines of educational institutions. Over the past year, the Filipino youth have spoken up about issues of transparency and accountability, or the lack thereof, in our government. We called out government officials and pushed for their trial to proceed forthwith, and we were met with disinformation, malicious comments, and red tagging. We need not look far. This year, I, myself, and fellow Kabataan leaders faced artificial intelligence, or AI-generated media, falsely depicting us as armed combatants. I am a duly sitting representative in Congress, and I am actively being branded as a terrorist. These attacks seem to tame, seek to tame the youth, to prevent us from fully understanding the true social realities of our time and using that truth to fashion genuine social change. What adds to the dark irony of it all is that, on the same day as International and National Youth Day today, we are also celebrating International Humanitarian Law Day. We are commemorating the adoption of the Geneva Conventions, which formed the foundation of IHL and aimed to limit the effects of armed conflict on civilians and those no longer participating in hostilities. And yet, the youth in the Philippines... And yet, the youth in the Philippines and in many parts of the world fall victim to human rights violations and other acts in flagrant transgressions of international humanitarian law, all dealt by state actors themselves. As we speak, the indiscriminate bombing in the province of Mindoro and the extrajudicial killings of farmers and indigenous people have intensified since 2024, according to locals. And the recent spate of killings of a Hanunu-O Mangyan youth named J.L. Maligday last year, and most recently, just last week, the killing of Maranal farmer Juan Sumilhig are no exception. Alarmed, youth paralegals volunteered to be part of a fact-finding humanitarian mission in the province. And in their various and numerous attempts to find the truth of the matter, they are currently facing relentless surveillance, arbitrary curfews, red tagging, violent dispersal, and threats of gunfire by police and military forces. Finally, I'd like to dedicate a few minutes to share another heartbreaking story of a youth who perished untimely because of the cruelty of those in power. Last Sunday, Al Jazeera reporter Anas Al Sharif, 28 years old, only a year older than me, along with four colleagues and two civilians, were murdered in a targeted Israeli attack on a tent just outside the Al Shifa Hospital in Gaza City. Since the genocide against Gazans have intensified in October 2023, he has served as the fearless face telling the stories of Palestinians against the relentless onslaught of disinformation, gaslighting, and black propaganda from US, Western, and Israeli media. For putting his life on the line for the truth, he was punished. In a tweet, serving as his final will and final message, he said, "I urge you not to let chains silence you, nor borders restrain you. Be bridges toward the liberation of the land and its people until the son of dignity and freedom rises over our stolen homeland. I entrust you to take care of my family." Today, in the city of Gaza, in the state of Palestine, the youth are no longer just facing genocide and a man-made famine under Israeli occupation. Now, Israel has outrightly said that they will be conducting an invasion. Israel is now trying to brand Anas as a terrorist to justify his killing, a tactic we know all too well here in the Philippines. With his brutal and targeted murder, Anas adds to the list of thousands of Palestinian youth under the age of 30 killed by Israel since the beginning of its genocidal siege in Gaza. But, Mr. Speaker, we, the youth, we are not mere statistics. We are not mere stories. We are people, and we will inherit our country and the whole world as the future generation. And so we, the youth, will not sit idly by as gross injustice and massive oppression have our country and the whole world on a chokehold. As we commemorate International and National Youth Day, we must revisit the historical role of the youth to learn from society and to understand that we, for generations now, have lived in a world where power and wealth are concentrated to a few, where there is an oppressor and the oppressed. And the challenge is to uncover this reality and always stand with the oppressed. Each time we have done so, the youth alongside the people made significant impacts for the betterment of our future. Like the May 4th Movement and the Soweto Uprising, the Filipino youth have shown their power before, as in the First Quarter Storm of 1970, which contributed ultimately to the downfall of the Marcos Senior Dictatorship. Mr. Speaker, we are not only the future of the nation, but also its shining hope. The youth are truly the hope of the nation, but only through collective action and persistent struggle can the best in the youth emerge. Therefore, we call on the Filipino youth and the youth of the world, unite to fight for our rights. We encourage the youth to take a page from the history of our sector: the May 4th Movement, the Soweto Uprising, and the First Quarter Storm. On today's International and National Youth Day, and International Humanitarian Law Day, we demand that the rights of the youth be protected, uphold academic freedom in schools, uphold international humanitarian law, and militarization in the countryside, and the Israeli genocide. The people in power fear the power of the people when the youth unite with the oppressed. To my fellow youth, let's not be afraid of the future and its uncertainty. Let's make oppressors afraid of us. We have a world to win. That is all, Mr. Speaker. Thank you very much.
Well said, Representative Renee Louise M. Ko of Partilis Kabataan. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, since there is no interpreter, I move to refer the speech of the Honorable Representative Renee Louise Ko, Partilis Kabataan, to the Committee on Rules for its appropriate action.
Thank you. Is there any objection? The chair here is none. The motion is approved, and the speech of Honorable Kabataan Partilis Representative Ko is hereby referred to the Committee on Rules for its appropriate action. Thank you. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move to recognize the gentleman, Representative Antonino B. Roman III, First District, Bataan, to avail of the privilege R.
Representative Antonino B. Roman III, First District of Bataan. You have the floor, sir. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Esteemed colleagues, good afternoon. I rise today compelled not by rhetoric, but by the urgent realities on the ground. I speak not only as the representative of the First District of Bataan, but as a son of a province that once again finds itself waist-deep in water, hope slowly being washed away by flood after flood, typhoon after typhoon every year. Typhoon carina and the relentless habagat have reminded us once again of a painful truth: when the rain falls, it doesn't fall equally. It falls hardest on the most vulnerable. And yet, this story isn't ours alone. From kagayan to kotobato, Filipinos are caught in a cycle. This is no longer the exception. It has become our reality. And let's be honest, this isn't just climate change. These are also the consequences of outdated systems, fragmented planning, and reactive governance. The floods come every year, but the plans remain on paper. The rains become heavier, but the drainage stays clogged. The forecasts are smarter, but our response stays the same. Mr. Speaker, Republic Act Number 10121, the Philippine Disaster Risk Reduction and Management Act, was passed in 2010. Back then, it was progressive. It was landmark legislation. But 15 years and hundreds of disasters later, we are no longer in the same world. We need a new kind of resilience, one that begins before the storm, not after. It is time to move beyond piecemeal interventions. What we need is a comprehensive, forward-looking, and fully-funded national disaster resilience plan. I respectfully propose a national disaster resilience agenda that, number one, integrates flood control and climate adaptation infrastructure at the local and regional levels. Number two, empowers local government units not only with mandates, but with actual technical and financial capacity. Number three, streamlines inter-agency coordination, including the Department of Public Works and Highways, Department of Science and Technology, Department of Environment and Natural Resources, National Disaster Risk Reduction and Management Council, Department of Interior and Local Government, Department of Information and Communications Technology, and the Office of Civil Defense. Number four, makes use of data in science, including climate projections and geo-hazard mapping in allocating national resources. And five, builds not just bad, but builds better, smarter, and more resilient. Our kababayan deserve more than just food packs. They deserve protection. They deserve preparedness. They deserve peace of mind. Let us also ensure that no province, no municipality, and no barangay is left to fend for itself after every typhoon or habagat. The Filipino people deserve more than emergency relief. They deserve protection, preparedness, and peace of mind. In this light, I respectfully request that this matter be referred to the Committee on Disaster Resilience and the Committee on Public Works and Highways for immediate consideration with the end goal of crafting a long-term, climate-smart, people-centered disaster resilience framework.
Maraming salamat, First District, Bataan, Province, Representative Antonino B. Roman III. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, since there is no interpreter, I move that we refer the speech of Representative Antonino B. Roman III, First District of Bataan, to the Committee on Rules for its appropriate action, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The chair here is not. The motion is approved. The speech of Representative Roman of Bataan is approved and is referred to the Committee on Rules for its appropriate action. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move to recognize the gentleman from Partilis Four Peace, Representative J.C. M. Abalos, to avail of the privilege R.
Partilis Four Peace Representative J.C. M. Abalos is hereby recognized. Please proceed, sir.
Whenever we craft and develop effective policies and determine what programs and services truly work, we need to base it on accurate, real-to-life data. It is for this reason, Mr. Speaker, that I am here to discuss an important source of data, one that is vital for our key social protection programs, the Community-Based Monitoring System, or CBMS. Enacted under RA 11315 in 2019, with the Philippine Statistics Authority, or the PSA, as the lead implementing agency, the CBMS Act provides that the state shall adopt a community-based monitoring system which generates updated and disaggregated data necessary in targeting beneficiaries conducting more comprehensive poverty analysis and needs prioritization, designing appropriate policies and interventions, and monitoring impact over time. The CBMS is essential for identifying beneficiaries of social protection and poverty alleviation programs, both at the local and the national levels. It also serves as the basis for allocating funds to these programs so we can prioritize our efforts toward those who are most in need of social protection programs. Unfortunately, Mr. Speaker, despite our best intentions, we are currently facing a serious and unfortunate reality: the CBMS data is not yet available. In last year's budget deliberation, on September 16, 2024, tinanong ko po 'yung PSA tungkol sa status ng CBMS, which covered 27.4 million households and 29.8 thousand institutional living quarters nationwide, with a budget amounting to 4.8 billion. In their response, PSA said that the POP Sen CBMS was 70% complete and was initially targeted to be finished in October 2024. Unfortunately, the target completion date was moved to December 2024 due to delays caused by typhoons and other uncontrollable factors, according to PSA. In addition, PSA stated that once data gathering is finished, they will turn over the data to the National Economic and Development Authority to be finalized and will eventually be available to be used by implementers of social protection and poverty alleviation programs. It was also in 2024, Mr. Speaker, that I received reports from Four Peace beneficiaries that a large number of them will graduate from the program due to mandatory exit, or beneficiaries who have reached the maximum seven-year stay. This was then confirmed by the DSWD during one of my courtesy visits to the department. The DSWD estimated that in 2024, a significant number of household beneficiaries will exit the Pantuwid program in 2025, while 3 million are expected to exit in 2026. It should also be noted, Mr. Speaker, that the use of listahanan by DSWD will end with the full implementation of CBMS in 2024. Therefore, the task of identifying potential household beneficiaries for government social welfare programs now relies entirely on the completion of CBMS. The concerns raised to me by Four Peace beneficiaries and DSWD in 2024 led me and Minority Leader Nonoy Libanan to file House Resolution 2085 in the 19th Congress to officially inquire about the status of the CBMS. A committee meeting was held by the Committee on Poverty Alleviation on November 26, 2024, for an initial deliberation on the said resolution. During this meeting, the PSA disclosed that as of November 15, 2024, they had visited 89.4% of the targeted 27 million households. they had visited 89.4% of the targeted 27 million households for the 2024 POP Sen CBMS. The PSA also confirmed that upon completion of data gathering in December 2024, the CBMS data would be delivered to the DSWD on a staggered basis until March 2025. So balit, Mr. Speaker, hindi ito nangyari. It is already the third quarter of the year, and until now, we are still waiting for the fulfillment of PSA's promise that the CBMS data would be completed by the first quarter of 2025. Para maipakita ang epekto ng pagkaantala ng datos ng CBMS, hayaan po niyong ilarawan ko ang sitosyon ng programa ng Four Peace bilang isang halimbawa, Mr. Speaker. Sa ngayon, humigit-kumulang tatlong milyon pamilya na lamang ang benepisaryo ng programa. Boomaba mula sa dating apat na milyon noong December 2024 dahil sa pagalis o pagtatapos ng mga benepisaryo. Ayon sa pinakabagong datos mula sa DSWD, mula 2024 hanggang 2026, merong 1.2 million na benepisaryo ang gagraduate mula sa programa dahil sa natural attrisyon o dahil wala ng bata sa kanilang pamilya na nasa edad 18 pababa. At 1.4 million naman, Mr. Speaker, ang gagraduate sa 2025 at 2026 dahil sila ay self-sufficient at hindi naitinuturing mahirap. Idagdag pa po natin rito ang inaasahang mandatory exit ng halos 1.9 million beneficiaries ngayong 2026. Since the DSWD had already exhausted the list of beneficiaries on their listahanan in 2024, wala na po silang mapapagkunan ng pamalit sa halos tatlong milyon puwestong mababakante sa programa hangga't hindi pa natatapos ang datos mula sa CBMS. At hindi lamang Four Peace ang apektado sa delay na ito, Mr. Speaker. Kung hindi, ang buong social protection at anti-poverty programs ng pamahalaan. We cannot add beneficiaries to several of our social protection programs not without the completion of CBMS. If we fail to address this immediately, this issue will not just linger. It will paralyze our efforts and undermine the very programs designed to help our kababayans. Maganda nga sana, Mr. Speaker, kung ang dahilan, kung bakit wala ng beneficiaries ay dahil wala ng nakakaranas ng kahirapan. Ngunit, ang totoo po, Mr. Speaker, ito ay dahil wala pa po tayong bagong listahan o bagong datos. Sa ating mga kababayan na dapat mapabilang sa mga social protection program ng pamahalaan, kayo ba ay nakaranas na ng census o napuntahan na ba kayo ng mga enumerators ng gobyerno? Mr. Speaker, the longer we wait for the CBMS data, the greater the disservice we do to our people. Sa puntong ito, nais kong ipahayag ang aking mapagkumbaba ngunit mahigpit na paalala para sa PSA. Una, sana ay matupad na ang mga naipangahong datos mula sa pagsasagawa ng CBMS upang magamit na ng mga social protection and poverty alleviation programs ng pamahalaan. Pangalawa, sana ay maitupad din ang nakasaad sa IRR ng Batas na pagsubsumite sa Kongreso ng Annual Accomplishment Report ng PSA uhol sa CBMS Implementation. Kung titignan din natin ang pondong inilaan sa PSA nitong mga nagdaang taon, baka kailangan dagdagan ng PSA ang kanilang pagsusumikap upang tumugma sa pondong inilalaan para sa kanila. Noong 2022 po, Mr. Speaker, 574 million pesos ang inilaan na pondo para sa pagsasagawa ng CBMS. Sa sumunod na taon o 2023, 76 million naman ang inilaan natin para sa pagpapatuloy ng nasabing programa. At nitong nakaraang taon, 2024, naglaan pa rin ng 5.7 billion pesos para rin sa CBMS. Hindi ko po hinahangad, Mr. Speaker, na bawasan ang pondo para sa CBMS. Ngunit, mas hinihiling ko na makita ang resulta ng pagpopondo rito. Marahil, Mr. Speaker, kailangan na rin buuin ang Joint Congressional Oversight Committee para sa CBMS. Ayon sa IRR ng CBMS Act, ang Oversight Committee ang magsasagawa ng evaluation sa pagpapatupad ng programa. Para kung sakaling may matukoy na kakulungan sa CBMS Implementation, ang Oversight Committee ang makapaghain ng mga karagdagang panukalang batas upang tumugon sa kakulungan ito. Sa pagtatapos, Mr. Speaker, nais ko pong ulitin ang aking panawagan sa ating mga ahensya, lalo na sa PSA, upang matapos na ang paghahanda sa mga kinakailangang datos para sa ating mga social protection programs at iba pang serbisyo na nangangailangan rito. Let us work together to effectively contribute to the poverty alleviation efforts of our national government. Maraming-maraming salamat, Mr. Speaker, dear colleagues, at magandang gabi po sa ating lahat.
Maraming-maraming salamat, Partilis Four Peace Congressman Avalos. Majority Leader, please.
Mr. Speaker, I move that the speech of Representative J C M Avalos, Partilis Four Peace, be referred to the Committee on Rules for its appropriate action.
Is there any objection? The chair here is not. The motion is approved. The speech of Four Peace Partilis Honorable Avalos. Representative Avalos is referred to the Committee on Rules for appropriate action. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to recognize the gentleman from Partilis Kamanggagawa, the Honorable Elijah Ramboa San Fernando, to avail of the privilege hour.
Representative Elijah Ramboa San Fernando, Partilis Kamanggagawa, is recognized. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleagues, sa mga kamanggagawa natin dito sa Kongreso, housekeeping, security, congressional staff, at sa lahat ng mga manggagawa at ordinaryong Pilipino nanonood, magandang gabi po. It is my privilege to give the maiden speech of lakampihan ng mga maralita at manggagawa, or also known as kamanggagawa partilis. Una, kami po ay tauspusong nagpapasalamat sa lahat ng mga nagtiwala sa amin noong nakaraang halalan. Di po namin tinitignan ang pagkapanalong ito bilang simpleng pagkapanalo lamang, kundi isang sagradong kasunduan sa pagitan ng kamanggagawa at ng mamamayang Pilipino. In this spirit also, I would like to congratulate my fellow representatives on your own victories. It is easy to take political democracy for granted, but the peaceful transfer of power which allows us to perform our responsibilities is as valuable as this institution itself. May we always remember who put us here: the Filipino people. Ang mga manggagawa at ordinaryong Pilipino, sila ho ang dahilan kung bakit tayo na rito. Mr. Speaker, Kamanggagawa Partilis was brought to this Congress through a historic campaign where we severely lack funding and resources. Lagi naming sinasabi noon, wala kaming budget. Di namin kayang makipagsabayan sa mga kumakandidato na may roong tradisyonal na makinariyang makikita at aasahan tuwing halalan. But in the absence of funding and traditional support, we rallied our members composed of trade unions, community and neighborhood associations, cooperatives, and other people's organizations. Mga ordinaryong tao katulad po ng inyong lingkod. Through the power of social media and a strong, consistent message, we were successful in channeling the voices of those who felt as if our current institutions no longer serve their interests, those disillusioned by the decades-old promise of provincial wages, and those who feel short-changed by the regular functioning of our economic system. I say this to you, dear colleagues, because we believe our campaign heralds a pivotal changes in politics and brings lessons we should all heed. Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleagues, the people are hungry for change, and we are tired of getting spare change from the institutions who ought to serve the interests of the many and not the few. Through social media, through community organizing, and through people-to-people conversations, we reach those who had long felt excluded and invisibilized. Mr. Speaker, we spoke to security guards, janitors, fast-food crew, riders, construction workers, vendors, nurses, and people from all walks of life. Many of them told us the same thing: they work hard but can barely survive. They vote but fail unheard. Thus, our campaign asked a hard but honest question: nasaan nga ba ang pangako ng demokrasya? Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleagues, before addressing this question, allow me to tell you a story about one of our constituents. Isa po sa mga nakilala ko sa pag-iikot si Ati Lorna, isang security guard. Security guard sa Davau. Isa po ay nagtatrabaho ng 12-hour shift para lamang sa kakaramput na 400 pesos kada araw. That is about 33 pesos per hour. Barely enough for three meals, much less for education, healthcare, or rent. Kina-kailangang lumipat ng kanyang asawa sa Maynila para sa mas mataas na sahod. Her kids have grown up barely knowing her father. Sabi niya sa amin, parang parusa ang maging mahirap sa probinsya. Kuwento po ito ng milyon-milyon Pilipino, Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleagues. Now, what is democracy? The dictionary definition is a government of the people, a rule by the majority. Democratization and development scholars invite us to embrace a more substantive definition: democracy not just as rights, but as the expansion of people's capabilities, democracy as enabling people's active participation and making them believe that such participation is meaningful. Mr. Speaker, mga kasama kong mambabatas, ang demokrasya ho ay hindi lang tungkol sa pagboto o karapatang bumoto tuwing halalan. Ang demokrasya ho ay tungkol sa daily right to eat, to rest, to learn and be educated, to be treated when sick, to be with one's family, to be treated with respect in the workplace, and to live a fulfilling and dignified life. Ang tunay na demokrasya ho ay nagbibigay ng kakayahan sa mamamayan, hindi lamang ng karapatan. Democracy should enable people not just to dream, but to pursue those dreams with real opportunities and real support. Ang kailangan nito ay mamamayang malaya sa gutom at sa kahirapan. Democracies furthermore must promote inclusive growth to preserve their democratic character. If a significant portion of the populace feels disenfranchised, the promise of the election of their leaders is tenuous at best. It turns voting into a formality, or worse, a cruel illusion. Kung hindi na naniniwala ang mamamayan sa sistema, wala ng pundasyon ang pananatili ng sistema. We need inclusive growth across the nation in recognition of the value of every worker, be they from NCR or any other region. Beyond the political democracy that put us in power, then there is an economic democracy that should be its foundation. Political power without economic freedom is empty and hollow. With all these in mind, we dare to ask, Mr. Speaker, Madam Speaker, and distinguished colleagues, do we truly have democracy in this country? Ayon po sa datos ng SWS, kalahati ng populasyon sa bansa ay nagsasabing sila ay mahirap. At isa sa limang pamilya ang nagsabing sila ay nakararanas ng gutom. Kung tayo nga pong mga nandito sa national capital region ay hirap ng pagkasahe ng 695 pesos sa isang araw, paano pa kaya ang mga manggagawa doon sa probinsya? Halimbawa na lang sa bar, kung saan sumasahot lang ang isang manggagawa ng 386 pesos. Napakalayo at wala pa ito sa kalahati ng sinasabi ng mga pag-aaral na higit isang libo dalawang daang piso. Kada araw ang kailangan para tugunan ang mga basic na pangangailangan para mabuhay ng disente. Worse, contractualization continues to flourish with workers kept in perpetual limbo, denied regular status, and robbed of job security. The scenario is even worse in government. According to the Civil Service Commission, 939,001 in every three government workers are JO or COS. Maramihong nakakaalam niyan dito sa bulwagang ito. Pati gobyerno may endo. It is clear then that our democracy is dysfunctional and injustice widespread. At the heart of this dysfunction, we humbly submit, Madam Speaker, that there is no greater affront to democracy than what we call provincial wages. Let us state it plainly: the provincial rate is akin to legal discrimination. It sets in stone the idea that workers in the provinces deserve less pay for virtually the same labor. Isa ito sa pinakamalinaw na halimbawa ng sistematikong diskriminasyon at pahirap sa mga manggagawa. The provincial wage system causes disparate and unequal development. It causes brain drain, making it advantageous for almost every worker to live in NCR instead of elsewhere. In a tragic, loose-loose scenario, the provincial wage system has caused congestion in Metro Manila and underdevelopment in the provinces. Madam Speaker, mga kapwa kong mambabatas, wala hong panalo dito. Lahat talo bukod sa mga malalaking, mga negusyante, at mga oligarko. Perhaps, worse of all, the provincial rate is separating our families like Ati Lornas. It erodes the moral fiber of our most basic social institution, one that our constitution swore to protect. Parehas lang naman po ang trabaho ng sikyo sa probinsya at sa Manila. Ganun na rin sa janitor, construction worker, BPO, at iba pang mga manggagawa. Parehong walong oras ang trabaho kada araw. Hindi naman ho mas mabigat ang semento dito sa Manila kumpara sa Bisayas o sa Mindanao. Pero bakit ho higit na mas barat ang sahod ng manggagawa sa probinsya? Our call is very simple, Mr. Speaker. Parehong sahod sa parehong pagod. Over the course of our campaign, we've heard several cliched arguments: abolishing the provincial rate will lead to uncontrolled inflation, capital flight, and can't be afforded by small businesses. These statements are as dated as they are dangerous. They are based on a theory and not updated by experience. We must call these statements out for what they are. Nothing more but excuses used to promote an inherently unjust and discriminatory system. May kumikita dahil sa diskriminasyon at magaling gumawa ng palusot upang ipagpatuloy ito. Lagi ring tinatanong, Mr. Speaker, kaya ba ng ekonomiya? We answer with a resounding yes. Mr. Speaker, mga kasama kong mambabatas, hindi na po uubra ang lumang palusot na hindi ito kaya ng ekonomiya o malulugi ang mga negosyo. Base sa huling Annual Survey of the Philippine Businesses and Industry ng PSA, 11% lamang ng kabuang gastos sa negosyo ang para sa pasahod, habang ang nangungunang isan libong korporasyon ay nagtala ng dalawang trilyong pisong kita. Uulitin ko po, Mr. Speaker, dalawang trilyong pisong kita noong 2023. Kaya ang mas dapat po nating itanong, kaya pa ba ng mga manggagawa? Kaya pa ba ng ordinaryong Pilipino na mamuhay sa sahod na halos kapiranggot kumpara sa pang-araw-araw na gastusin? Hindi po teoria ang pinag-uusapan natin dito, Mr. Speaker, kundi aktwal na buhay ng milyon-milyon Pilipino. So let me be clear: we will not rest until we abolish the provincial wage system. This is our sacred covenant with our constituents. Beyond that, Kamanggagawa Partilis will push and support for the implementation of the constitution's promise of living wage. We will assert workers' basic benefits like resignation pay, sick and vacation leaves. We will fight for the regularization of workers, the defense of their rights to organize, and assert their interests via strike. To paraphrase Albert Camus, "In this world of conflict, we should always be on the side of the victims." not the executioners." Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleagues, we also have no illusions that this will be an easy task. We know that this will be an uphill battle. That is why, Mr. Speaker, we extend our hand of friendship to all, no matter the party affiliation. After all, what we need are legislators who not just lend their ears to reason, but truly work towards advocating for workers and ordinary people's interests. Alam at batid po namin na magkakaroon tayo ng mga debate at maaring umabot po sa mga punto ng hindi pagkakaintindihan. But we are prepared to defend our proposals here in Congress with facts and arguments. Pero nais ko pong ilinaw at bigyangdiin, lalong-lalo na po sa mga kasama ko sa bulwagang ito. Sa usapin ng ikabubuti, ng kalagayan ng mga manggagawa, kaibigan at kasama punin niyo ang buong Kamanggagawa. As their representative, I will not shy away from the label of manggagawa. Nakabarong man ho, manggagawa pa rin ang turing ko sa aking sarili. I still believe that the prestige of this office not only extends as far as the work we do for the Filipino people and infirm solidarity with workers and the Filipino people. This is our campaign promise, and I have committed to take only a minimum wage from my congressional salary, with the remainder going to the trade unions and federations who advance workers' welfare. This is my commitment to understanding the true situation of the Filipino worker. Mr. Speaker, in this time of great upheaval of growing inequality and disillusionment, the Filipino people need a responsive and dynamic Congress, one that listens as much as it speaks and acts with resolve and conviction when the opportunity presents itself. Kailangan namang ordinaryong Pilipino ng kongresong matapang at marunong mangarap. Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleagues, let us be the Congress which rises to this great task. Let us be the Congress which helps save our failing democracy. Maraming salamat po, Mr. Speaker, at sa aking mga kasama dito sa bulwaga nito. Magandang gabi po.
In solidarity, our fellow trade unionists, Kamanggagawa Partelist Congressman Elijah R. Fernando. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I'd like to move to extend the privilege hour for another 20 minutes.
Privilege hour. There's a motion to extend the privilege hour. Is there any objection? Motion is approved. We extend to one hour. Majority Leader.
Sir Speaker, there being no member who wishes to interpolate, I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable San Fernando to the Committee on Rules for its appropriate action.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The speech of Honorable Elijah Caeli San Fernando, Congressman of Kamanggagawa Partelist, is referred to the Committee on Rules for its appropriate action. Majority Leader.
Sir Speaker, I move to recognize a gentleman from the First District of Aklan, the Honorable Jesus Jes Marquez, to avail of the privilege hour.
First District, Aklan, Representative Jesus Jes R. Marquez. You're recognized, sir. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Our distinguished colleagues may adayan nga gabi sa atuntanan. Today, I rise to speak on a matter of urgent public concern, an issue that reemerges with alarming regularity during every rainstorm, exposing deficiencies in our systems and underscoring the pressing need for concerted action. I refer to the persistent and overwhelming problem of garbage, a challenge that threatens our environment, endangers public health, and undermines the quality of life of our people. Over the years, our cities have repeatedly drowned not only in floodwaters, but also in the waste that clogs our streets and our waterways. This is not merely an inconvenience. It is a crisis that puts lives at risk, disrupts livelihoods, and erodes the productivity our nation can ill afford to lose. This is not a new concern for this chamber. Since the 17th, 18th, and 19th Congresses, my predecessor and father Congressman Carlito Marquez has consistently championed to modernize our approach to waste management. It is an innovation that allows conversion of our waste into something we can call benefit. This policy initiative even then earned the strong support of many of his colleagues. Let us consider the data. Metro Manila produces more than 10,000 metric tons of solid waste every single day. That is over 3.5 billion tons a year. In my home province, the province of Aklan, our daily waste generation exceeds 100 metric tons, and this story is repeated across provinces. Much of this garbage ends up in landfills that are now nearing capacity. Illegal dump sites persist out of necessity, and far too much waste finds its way into our rivers, our lakes, and the seas. And when the typhoon comes, the consequences are devastating. Filipino homes are flooded, streets become impassable, and work is halted. Our children miss school, and communities suffer not only health risks, but also deep and lasting socioeconomic losses. As Manila's own leaders have acknowledged, traditional collect-and-dump methods can no longer keep pace. The clogging our canals may bring temporary relief, but for how long, they are blocked again. What could be a solution, Mr. Speaker? Now in the 20th Congress, it is an opportunity for us to rethink the innovation that could be made available to us, one that is large-scale, viable, and perhaps future-ready. And that is waste-to-energy, a solution that not only reduces waste, but brings back its value to us. Waste-to-energy, otherwise known as waste-treatment technology, involves the controlled burning of garbage to produce heat, which in turn drives turbines to generate electricity. It is a form of biomass power, producing renewable energy while reducing the volume of waste that would otherwise end up in landfills. Waste-to-energy has been a proven path forward that many countries have ever since embraced, alongside their recycling programs turning refuse into power, jobs, and cleaner communities. That even the countries of Japan, South Korea, and Singapore have waste-to-energy facilities in place. Japan operates over 1,000 waste-to-energy facilities, converting waste into clean energy and using advanced emission controls to ensure air quality. South Korea integrates waste-to-energy with aggressive recycling, diverting waste from landfills and producing electricity for their cities. Singapore's Tuas Plant processes over 8,200 tons daily, powering thousands of homes and using leftover ash for land reclamation. This is not only solving their waste problems, they are also reducing dependence on fossil fuels and moving closer to net-zero emission targets. By generating power without the need for fossil fuels, waste-to-energy will also help achieve effective reduction in greenhouse gas emissions. Mr. Speaker, waste-to-energy is not a silver bullet, but it offers a huge part of our solution. While garbage is difficult to eliminate completely, it can be used effectively. It can be an essential part of a circular economy where waste becomes a resource and nothing is thrown away without a purpose. And let me assure the public. Modern WTE plants today are equipped with the latest technology and are strictly regulated. Emissions can be monitored in real time, 24 hours a day, by the DNR and other relevant agencies. These real-time monitoring systems shall ensure that all emissions stay well within safe and acceptable levels, meeting both local and international standards. Data from these systems shall be made available for public scrutiny, ensuring transparency and accountability at all times. Let us not forget. Open dump sites pose far greater health hazards, from groundwater contamination to respiratory illnesses to the spread of vector-borne diseases. Modern waste-to-energy plants, when operated under strict environmental standards and real-time monitoring, can safely manage our waste and even produce usable byproducts such as ash for construction and roadworks. I therefore ask, what is truly better for our people? Mountains of garbage polluting our land and water? Or harnessing that waste to generate electricity, create jobs, and support our transition to clean energy? That is why I personally refile the bill on regulating waste-treatment technology in our country and give the chance it deserves and bring the Philippines in step with modern, sustainable nations. Garbage is a challenge that transcends politics. After all, modern challenges demand modern solutions, solutions encouraging collaboration and fostering a whole-of-society approach. Together with the private sector, we can mobilize resources, share expertise, and scale innovations that will finally turn this problem into an opportunity for progress. Esteemed colleagues in the 20th Congress, I call on all of us to rally behind a solution that will propel our nation toward greater innovation, one that is forward-looking, resilient, and able to turn challenges into opportunities. Even our honorable Speaker Ferdinand Martin Romaldes himself filed a waste-treatment technology measure in the 19th Congress, a legislation that has repeatedly passed on third and final reading of the House. Let us not allow this vital measure to be shelved once again. I end with the words of environmentalist Paul Hawken. "Real sustainability is about transformation, a shift from a system that takes, makes, and wastes to one that creates, conserves, and restores." Let us be the generation that transform our nation's waste into hope, progress, and a cleaner future. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, esteemed colleagues. Good evening, each and everyone.
Maraming salamat, Representative Jes R. Marquez of Aklan. Majority Leader, please.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member who wishes to interpolate, I move to refer the speech of the Honorable Marquez to the Committee on Rules for its appropriate action.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The speech of Honorable Marquez of the province of Aklan is hereby approved and referred to the Committee on Rules for its appropriate action. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to recognize a gentleman from the Second District of South Cotabato, the Honorable Ferdinand L. Hernandez, avail of the privilege hour.
Congressman, may gabii, Congressman Ferdinand L. Hernandez of Second District of South Cotabato. Please proceed, sir.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. Saving the best for last. Mr. Speaker and distinguished colleagues, mayayong gabi sa atuntanan. I rise today on a matter of personal and collective privilege to speak as a Filipino, fighting for the welfare of our youth and shaping a brighter future for them through the transformative power of education. And how very fitting it is that I get to deliver this message today as we celebrate the International Youth Day. When the world acknowledges the vital role that the young people play as agents of change, leaders and mobilizers in promoting development. In this mission, we are not alone. The Government Through Republic Act Number 10931, also known as the Universal Access to Quality Tertiary Education Act, has taken a bold step toward this shared vision. This landmark law seeks to break down the barriers that prevent so many young Filipinos from reaching their full potential. Its objectives are clear, deeply aligned with our collective aspirations. To provide adequate funding and other mechanisms to increase participation across all socioeconomic classes in tertiary education. To ensure equal opportunity for all Filipinos to access quality tertiary education, whether in public or private institutions. To give priority to academically-able students, especially those coming from poor families. To ensure that government resources in education are used efficiently and effectively. To offer proper guidance and incentives for young Filipinos in making informed career choices and in developing their skills towards nation-building. And to recognize the essential complementary roles of both public and private institution in strengthening our tertiary educational system. This is more than just a law. It is a promise. A promise that education will not be a privilege for the few, but a right for all. Reflecting on the testimonials shared by our graduates from Region 12 who received 60,000 under the Tertiary Education Subsidy Program, it is truly heartwarming and fulfilling to hear their stories of gratitude and success in pursuing their college education, all made possible through the subsidy and support they receive. According to the testimony shared by Sheena Barulan, who graduated from Green Valley College Foundation, Inc., "I'm proud to be the first degree holder in my family, and I'm deeply grateful for the TES grant that made my college education more manageable and eased the burden on my family." Another testimony shared by Diana Sagan from same school. "Your support has truly made a difference in my life, and I am forever thankful for helping me finish my studies. I have been able to focus on my academic goals, develop my skills, and build a strong foundation for my future. Through the tertiary education subsidy, we were able to give hope and pave the way for our youth to fulfill their dreams, making college education accessible without the fear of financial burden. But this has changed, and not for the better. According to Article 14, Section 1, our constitution clearly dictates the rights of our youth for quality education. To quote, "The state shall protect and promote the right of all citizens to quality education at all levels and shall take appropriate steps to make such education accessible to all."
Hindi ko mabilang ang mga estudyante na lumapit sa akin upang idulog ang hirap na kanilang dinaranas sa pag-aaral. Malaking tulong sana ang TES program upang mapunuan ang pinansyal na kakulangan na makabataang Pilipino. Ngunit mula sa original na 60,000 pesos kada taon na natatanggap ng ating mga skolar, ngayon ay naging 27,000. Kada taon o halagang 13,500 na lamang kada semester ang natatanggap ng mag-aaral.
ang natatanggap ng mag-aaral sa private higher education institution, at twenty thousand kada taon halagang ten thousand na lamang kada semester para sa mag-aaral sa public higher education institutions. Ang sitosyon ito, ang pagbawas ng kanilang subsidy ay isang patunay na paglalabag sa saligang batas na imbis na protektahan ang kanilang kinabuha- instead na proteksyonan natin ang kinabukasan ng bawat kabataan, ito ay talagang, uh, nakaapekto sa kanila. Nakasaad sa Republic Act Number One Zero Nine Three One na ang cost of tertiary education ay ang tuition at other school fees, educational expenses, and cost of living allowance. Ngunit ano ang magagawa ng halagang thirteen thousand five hundred per semester sa isang estudyante na nasa private higher educational institutions at ten thousand para sa public higher educational institutions? Hindi lamang ito ang nagpapakita ng kawalang katarungan sa alokasyon ng pondong, ngunit isang malinaw na paglabag sa konstitusyon. Article Fourteen, Section Five, Subparagraph Five ng ating nineteen eighty-seven constitution, malinaw na nakasaad: "The state shall assign the highest budgetary priority to education and ensure that teaching will attract and retain its rightful share of the best available talents." Kung highest budgetary priority dapat ang edukasyon, bakit po natin binabawasan ang pondong tutulong mismo sa mga estudyante para makapagpatuloy ng pag-aaral? Ang magbibigay ng mga pangmatrikula, pambayad ng uniporme at libro, pamasahe papuntang skwelahan upang bayad sa boarding house? Mister Speaker, mga kapakumambabatas, sa nakaraang state of the nation, sinabi po mismo ni Pangulong Ferdinand Marcos Junior, puspusan nating inaayos at pinapaganda ang ating sistema ng edukasyon. Sa lahat ng mga pinahahalagahan ng administrasyon, ito pa rin ang nasa ruro. Kung mismong pangulo ang nagsabi na edukasyon ang magiging priority ng budget, dapat tayong manindigan na ang T E S na direktang tumutulong sa mga estudyante ay hindi dapat kaltaasan kundi dagdagan. Alam mo to discuss the current condition of higher education at Region Twelve, where I belong. According to the data provided by the Commission on Higher Education, Region Twelve, there is a steady increase in the number of enrollees in our region from one hundred twenty-nine thousand one hundred eighty-three students on academic year twenty nineteen to twenty twenty to two hundred twenty-six thousand five hundred six students on academic year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. The value doubled in a matter of five years. Out of the current enrollees, eighty-five thousand fifty-five are currently T E S grantees of Region Twelve. From this, thirty-two thousand three hundred eighty-six students are grantees from higher education institution located in my district. This is at Coronadal City, the regional center of Socsergen, and home of several large higher education institutions. Despite this, only seven hundred sixty-eight students enrolled in H E I's located in my district are currently benefiting from the original amount of sixty thousand. Napakalayo ng seven hundred sixty-eight students sa kabuhan- sa kabu- kabuhang bilang ng eighty-seven thousand fifty-five T E S grantees sa aking region. Seven hundred sixty-eight students lamang ang nakaranas ng buong sixty thousand subsidy. Bakit hindi natin ito gawin sa lahat ng grantees? Bakit hindi natin ibalik ang matibay na suporta ng pamahalaan sa edukasyon ng ating mga mag-aaral? Sa ganitong sitosyon, ang pagbawas ng T E S ay direktang tumatama sa puso ng problema. Napipilitan ang mga kabataan na tumigil sa kanilang pag-aaral dahil kapos ang pera. Edukasyon ang susi upang matigil ang kahirapan ng pamilyang Pilipino. Ngunit paano natin tutuldukan ang systemic poverty? Kung ang edukasyon, the greatest equalizer, ay hindi natin popondahan ng maayos. Mga kwento sa Region Twelve. Maraming kwento ay binahagi ng mga kabataan sa akin, just to name a few. Isang estudyante mula sa Sultan Kudrat, isang T E S grantee. Nagbebayahe ako ng isang oras kada araw. Pamasahe ko one hundred pesos araw-araw. Ngunit, ngayon na lumit ang T E S, hindi na si- ako siguro kayang maka-graduate pa. Mula naman sa South Cotabato, ang sabi ng isa, na another grantee, kahit may T E S, kulang na kulang para sa pamasahe uniporme at load sa online classes. Paano pa ako, paano pa akong babawasan pa ito? Ilan lamang ito sa mga nagpapatunay na ang T E S ay hindi simpleng tulong. Ito ang lifeline ng mga kabataang taga-probinsya. Malayong-malayo ang mensahe ng mga mag-aaral sa mga testimonials ng ating mga T E S grantees na nakatanggap ng buong suporta mula sa pamahalaan. Maging ang Edcom Two ay napuna ang nakakabahalang sitosyon na ito kung saan isinadito sa Year Two Report na limiting the T E S subsidy redo- reduces the number of programs that students can afford disproportionately disadvantageous private institution and places burden of the living costs such as books, dormitories, and other expenses on students and their families. This financial strain increases the likelihood of students dropping out before completing their education. Ultimately, Edcom Two recommends the increase in T E S subsidy amount that will reflect the current realities, including living expenses and tuition fees especially in private higher education institution. This adjustment would provide a more equitable set of choices for grantees, enabling them to select the programs and institutions based on their preferences rather than financial limitations. Ito ang kahalagahan ng T E S program para sa ating mga kabataan. Una, ang kalayaang pumili ng pangarap nilang kurso hindi sa kung anong kakasya lang sa halagang thirteen thousand five hundred kada semester. Pangalawa, ang pagkakataon na makatapos ang pag-aaral dahil sa suporta ng pamahalaan. Sa kabila ng mga- sa kabila ng pag-aaral na ito, humarap na naman ang panibagong hamon ang aking riyon. Sa naghanap na fourth-eight regular meeting ng UniPass Board, kinilala ang pagkatatad ng U P School of Health Sciences sa Coronadal Campus na magdudulot ng reclass- reclassification ng Coronadal City na magiging non-place of no S U C, L U C category. Ano po ang implikasyon nito para sa ating mga kabataan? Mas marami ang hindi makakaabey ng T E S program. Bagat- bagamat maganda na magkaroon ng karagdagang edukasyon institution sa Coronadal City, ngunit hindi naman kayang ma-accommodate ng U P campus ang lahat ng mga estudyante na kasalukuyang naka-enroll sa private higher education institutions. Meron nga pong U P campus, ngunit ang tanging diploma ay midwife-free lamang na kuso. Limitado ang slots at may prioridad na pag- naibibigay ito sa ating mga indigenous people. Sa panahon na wawawala ang P N S L category sa aking distrito, ang mga enrollees sa private higher education institution ay hindi magiging prioridad sa ilalim ng T E S program at magiging limitado na lamang sa listahan na ng lista ng D S W D. This is the reason why I wrote a formal letter to the Commission on Higher Education and UniPass Board to urgently revisit and correct the policy of this reclassification. The current policy is unfair, unreasonable, and manifestly unjust. It disregards the reality faced by students from South Cotabato and defeats the very purpose of tertiary education subsidy, to support those with limited access to higher education. Mahalaga ang partipasyon- partisipasyon ng private H I E I's sa pagpapasiguro na ang lahat ng kabataan ay makapag-aaral. Ang mga kurso na nasa Maynila ay meron din sa probinsya. Sa dahan-dahan pag-develop ng ating public educational institution, ating kilalanin ang tulong ng mga private institution sa pagbigay ng pag-asa sa bawat kabataang nais makipag- makapagtapos ng pag-aaral at bigyan ang mga kabataan naka-enroll sa private higher institution ng pantay na access sa tulong ng gobyerno. According to several jurisprudence on non-retrogression, one state grants a privilege, the right to it cannot simply be taken away without reasonable justification, safeguards, or procedural opportunities. Sa usupin ng edukasyon at karapatan ng mga kabataan, mahalagang alalahanin ang principle of non-retrogression. Hindi dapat bumababa ang antas o halaga ng suporta ang ibinibigay ng gobyerno sa mga kabataan. Kapag binawasan natin ang T E S, malinaw naatras ito, hindi progreso. Sa madaling salita, kapag naipagkalooob na ang isang prebilihiyo, hindi ito basta pwedeng bawasan o ipagkait ng walang makatarungan batayan at tamang proseso. Mister Speaker, kung itataas natin ang tertiary education subsidy, magiging mas mababa ang dropout rate, mas maraming magtatapos at magiging productive workers. Mas makakapagfocus ang estudyante sa pag-aaral kaysa mag-aalala sa gastos. Basic right ang edukasyon na nararapat nating ibigay sa bawat kabataan. Pantay na laban para sa mga taga-probinsya gaya ng Region Twelve na badalas naiiwan sa resources sa pamagitan ng private higher education institution, available na ang mga kurso na wala sa local universities and colleges and state colleges and universities. Hindi na kailangang lumuwas ang Manila na sa amin na mismo probinsya ang pagkakataon na makapag-aaral ng gusto nilang mga kurso. Patas na pagkakataon sa bawat mag-aaral, lalo tigit na nasa low-income families na makapag-enroll ng kurso ang kanilang pinipili at pagkakataong makamit ang kanilang pangarap. At ang pinakamahalagang puntos, ang pagtatapos ng ating mga kabataan. Kaya naman po tayo gumawa ng ganitong batas ay upang mas madali ang access sa edukasyon ng mga kabataan. Tulog na nararamdaman ang ating nais ibigay hindi kakarampot na subsidy. Isinumitin ang higher education institution sa aking distrito na ilang datos na mahalagang bigyan pansin. Hindi na sustain ang double-digit enrollment growth na thirty-two point two percent noong academic year of twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two at fifty-four point four percent noong academic year twenty twenty-two to twenty-three. Sa katunayan, bumagsak ang growth rate na ito sa five point three percent noong academic year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four at point three percent noong academic year twenty twenty-four at twenty twenty-five. Ito ang resulta ng pagbawas ng T E S sa kabataan. Bakit pa ba sila magge-enroll kung hindi naman nila kaya ang gastusin? Mister Speaker, panahon na, ibalik at taasan ang T E S sa hindi bababa sa sixty thousand kada taon sapat para sa tuition fee, educational expenses, and cost of living living allowance ng kada riyon. I-index ang T E S sa inflation at regional living costs para laging relevant. Siguraduhin ang timely release ng T E S funds dahil delayed subsidy ay denied subsidy. Bigyan ang maayos na assessment ang bawat riyon ang kalaga- ang kalagahan ng private higher education institution sa bagtugtong na kakulangan ng ating mga S U Cs and L U Cs sa infrastruktura, lalo na sa higit na course offering. T E S is not dole-out. Ito ay konstitucional na mandato at moral obligation. Kung highest budget priority ang edukasyon ayon sa ating konstitusyon, lalo pat sinabi ng pangulo na ito ang focus ng budget, wala pong dahilan para hindi natin taasan at ayusin ang T E S. Education is not charity. It's a nation-building. Mister Peak- Mister Speaker, nais kong ulitin muli na ang thirteen thousand five hundred at ten thousand kada semester para sa T E S programs sa private and public higher education institution respectively ay hindi lang kulang. Ito ay kawalan ng katarungan at paglabag sa saligang batas. Ito ay pagtanggi sa pangako ng ating- ng ating pamahalaan. Ibalik natin ang makatarungan at sapat na subsidy para sa bawat kabataan. Buksa natin muli ang pinto ng pag-asa. Maging susi tayo ng katuparan ng pangarap ng bawat kabataan, lalo't lalo tigit ang mga nasa probinsya ang makapagtapos ng pag-aaral. Thank you, Mister Speaker.
Tagang kayong salamat, Representative Congressista Ferdinand L. Hernandez, segundo distrito, South Cotabato. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, there being no other member wishes to interpretate, I move to refer the speech of the Honorable Hernandez to the Committee on Rules for its Appropriate Action.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. The speech of, uh, South Cotabato Second District, Representative Hernandez is referred to the Committee on Rules for Appropriate Action. Majority Leader, please.
Mister Speaker, I'd like to move to suspend the privilege hour.
Suspend.
There is a motion to suspend the privilege hour. Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, considering that copies of Journal Number Five dated August sixth, twenty twenty-five were already distributed to the members, I move to dispense with the reading thereof and subsequently to approve the said journal. I so move with your speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. The reading of the said journal is dispensed with, and Journal Number Five dated August sixth, twenty twenty-five is hereby approved. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move to consider House Resolution, House Concurrent Resolution Number Four. And for this purpose, my request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill or the resolution.
Secretary General is so directed.
Ah, Mister Speaker, I withdraw the motion.
Yes, sir.
Uh, motion to suspend session for a few minutes.
Session suspended. Session, um, resume. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I reiterate the motion to consider House Concurrent Resolution Number Four. And for this purpose, my request the Secretary General to be directed to read the title of the resolution.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Secretary General, please proceed.
House Concurrent Resolution Number Four. Concurrent Resolution Amending the Legislative Calendar for the First Regular Session of the Twentieth Congress of the Philippines. for the First Regular Session of the 20th Congress of the Philippines.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to adopt House Concurrent Resolution Number 4.
There is a motion to adopt House Concurrent Resolution Number 4. All those who say in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those against it, say nay. The ayes have it. House Resolution... House Resolution, Concurrent Resolution Number 4 is hereby adopted. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to suspend session until tomorrow, August 13 at 3:00 p.m. in the afternoon. I move, Mr. Speaker.
Session is suspended until August 13, Wednesday, 3 o'clock in the afternoon. Session is hereby suspended. Tagan salamat, mayn gabey.
Another day, another...